COVID-19 updates followed by public comment. We have a presentation tonight of the MIA 2021 Risk Management Award at the town of Norfolk. Action items include considering approval of street sign replacements in Norfolk. Consider authorizing, reauthorizing an intermunicipal agreement with the Surge Services Group. To consider donating a town hall parking sticker to the Norfolk Community Television fundraising auction. Two discussion items include a presentation by both the school department and facilities departments on their future capital needs. A presentation regarding the use of rotaries in Norfolk. To discuss a citizen of the year award. Discuss website posting of board correspondence. Town administrator updates, and then there are four warrants to approve and one set of minutes to approve.
Thank you very much, Blythe, to kick us off. Would you like to start with some COVID-19 updates?
Would. So this last week saw finally after about a three-month run of reduction in Norfolk's overall cases. That brought us back down into the yellow zone. So that was a welcomed change from the red we've been experiencing in the case numbers that we've had. As you well know, Kevin, the case count at the prison is, seems to be well under control, and that has contributed significantly. But it was just nice to have a glimmer of good news when it's been difficult over a few months. And we hope that that continues. Thank everybody for what they're doing to make that possible. Secondly, along those lines, my notes. We've updated the website with a little bit different graphic thanks to the Board of Health provided some information for us and updated the links for people about finding out about the vaccine and a link specifically to the large site in Gillette Stadium. As people are looking to get those shots, especially folks who are beginning of phase two, which is anyone over 75 years of age. I don't need to go on too much to have everyone be well aware of the difficulty getting a vaccine has been so far despite the rollout of the state of all the sites. And it's, you know, the news is consistent about difficulty with getting vaccine, but I would want, I do want to tell people that we have been giving thought to having a vaccine clinic for our vulnerable population, those over 75 at least, and exploring that with staff. And while we're looking into it, we don't have any firm details that we can offer and have not developed the plan yet. And I just want to touch on, you know, why that is. We very much like to, but there are a couple of things that present complications for us. Among them, we don't have a doctor that, on our staff or on our board, that can act as the one who orders doses and manages that process. That would have to be outsourced either to the VNA we work with or to another doctor we haven't identified. That presents complications to getting the vaccine. And if you can, right now, local towns are only receiving 100 doses at a time each week at the most. And so trying to mount a vaccine clinic, we want to have it for enough, enough people to make it a very worthwhile experience. You know, maybe as many as 200 or 250 in a day. But when you get vaccine, you have to use it in a short amount of time. And so there's lots of rules around how that works, and that complicates things. It also requires a lot of knowledge and skill and a couple of different software programs the state requires for reporting and then managing the whole signup for vaccines and getting the town getting paid back for the cost, which is about $90 a shot. That, again, we don't have any, a staff in health, in the health department and the Board of Health members are all, you know, part-time volunteers, nobody to really take that on. And while several staff have said, sure, I'll do it, I've been told it's, it's, it's quite an undertaking to come up to speed on all that. So having said all that, what we are exploring, what the group came up with, was that there are several ambulance companies, private companies, who are looking to be able to offer this as a service. And we are in the process of reaching out to three different ones. One, we have a relationship with because they handle our billing, and two, we have relationships through other means. And looking to see if that would be a good model to help partner with us to manage a clinic. As, as the group discussed, the easiest part is actually, you know, setting up a large, you know, facility room, whether it's at the COA or perhaps, and we haven't explored this with the school, you know, if that would even be possible. Getting, you know, volunteers, being able to assign some of our paramedics and actually giving someone a shot. I wish it was, that was all that was required, but that doesn't seem to be. But if we can do this, we're certainly going to work to pull it off. As you know, we'd have to do it twice, at least twice, because the vaccine comes in two shots. And I would just tell the board that we're, that we're working on it right now, trying to figure out how we can overcome some of these challenges to be successful at it. What I would ask people to do is, is if you're in this age group and, you know, there, we're well aware that there may be people in our community don't have access to internet or really find that a challenge to get signed up. Please give the COA a call. Staff there is very much willing to help and, you know, may be able to help link people up with the call center that's being set up and help them get to someone who can walk them through it and get them signed up. So for now, that's what we can offer and I'm happy to take any questions that the board may have about it.
Thank you, Blythe. And just to touch on something you had said earlier in your outline, you know, this past week was the first time that we really saw a heavy decrease in any kind of case counts or testing contributed by the prison. I think that as I continue to make my way through different general counsel that represents the DOC, we haven't really got any clear ideas to which reporting mechanism is the most accurate coming out of there, but obviously if everybody's aligned that there is nothing coming out of there in terms of cases or tests, then we can be confident that this is a representation of what our community is experiencing in terms of positivity rate in cases per 100,000. It is a great thing that we've entered into a decreased level of risk and the yellow designation by the state, but by no means does that mean that we can start throwing parties and going crazy. I think it's important to note that, you know, this is a time to stay diligent, continue doing what we're doing and continue to kind of lead the region in maintaining and keeping numbers low. Because that's what it looks like as of right now. So I'll echo Blythe's words and appreciation to the community for helping to make that happen. I don't have any questions related to COVID. Cece, any questions for Blythe?
So Mike, more of a comment than a question. In terms of the idea of rolling something out for the citizenry at the municipal level, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a worthy goal. I know from past experience that the regular flu vaccine rollout that happened in the past was really well received. I thought was a great community endeavor, but I really, I just want to be clear, not clear, but I want to be on record as indicating that I don't think that at this juncture, vaccinating the public against a new disease amid a pandemic with a brand-new vaccine is really, should fall on the shoulders. I think it's fine to try, but I don't think that it should fall on the shoulders. I don't know that people should feel obligated to be taking up the mantle of vaccinating the public. At this juncture, I think, given how new it is, given the interface with the federal government, I think it falls to the state government. And so I appreciate your efforts. I appreciate people weighing in and offering to help. But I hope that anyone who is watching this understands that really I think it's the state right now who should be leading the charge. I have my own opinions about how well they've done that or not. And that people shouldn't be waiting for the municipal or expecting, expecting the municipal governments throughout the state to be able to do it at this juncture. It's such a new vaccine, all of the problems inherent in getting it out. I absolutely applaud your efforts, but I think that it is definitely on the state at this point. I'm, I'm interested in the future to hear what it is that the ambulance companies would be doing and or expecting in terms of payment. Are they also going to be seeking insurance information, et cetera? All good things to be exploring, but I think also perhaps a paperwork nightmare. And so I just want to say that I think it's great that you're looking. I don't think that people should be expecting towns to be leading the charge at this juncture. I think it needs to be the state interfacing with the federal government.
So I'm gonna, I'm sorry. I'm just going to say that I, I would love if the state would take leadership in a lot of places and give us some leadership with the schools or give us some leadership, but their leadership has been fickle, maybe is a, is a nice word, and changing target. And I, and I commend Blythe for pursuing that for our town. And I would love for, for people to see their towns in, in the vacuum of the state providing a coherent plan. I think towns are left to their own devices, and I commend her for looking into that for us. Ideally, I agree with you, Cece, the state should set up a system, and this is how towns get it, and this is how it's going to go. And that, that doesn't seem to be as clear of a path as, as you would hope. And then the only thing I would say is I have heard a lot of reports on the radio about seniors who are confused or who don't have a laptop or who don't have that. And maybe we could have something on our town website that says, if you need help, call here, like you just recommended a place for them to call to get help. So that there's a clear way through their town that they know and trust that they can get. This is the way I need to go if I get help.
Thank you. The one thing I would say, and just building on what you just said, Anita, and thank you, Cece, is that I think one thing the state needs to work on and all communities need to work on is a more reach, at least regional approach to public health. I mean, it would be a lot for Norfolk to add staff to have a more robust department. When hopefully we can accomplish that regionally and do it at a better price point. We are in a grant application to study this, study setting up a district with six or seven other towns, and I'm going to pursue that and see what that looks like. Because the approach we've got going on just for this rollout of this, this vaccine is, has been a challenge. Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to add, and, and I guess I'm again dovetailing for like the 11,000th time with Anita, and perhaps I wasn't clear, is that I'm by no means suggesting that I think that the state is doing a bang-up job of rolling out the vaccine. I just think that people need to call them, to task and have them, and have an expectation that this, how early we are in the process. It's not the flu vaccine. It's not any of the other vaccines. There's a limited amount. Seems like a lot, but it's coming from the federal government in weird ways. And again, I applaud Blythe's efforts, but if people are going to, I think we need to hold the state accountable and sort of a clarion call to get them to do what they need to do at the same time as we're engaged in the efforts to sort of build our own infrastructure in that way. So that as, you know, the belt to the suspenders and then ultimately, you know, take off from there. And I agree with you on regional, and it's regionalization. But in the short term, if people are clamoring that the town needs to be, this is more of an if, right? If the people are clamoring that the town needs to be the one interfacing with the United States federal government to acquire millions of, of whatever vials of this vaccine and then educating the public on how to get access. I just don't think that that's fair. And I think that that leaves a, a vulnerable population still vulnerable and that instead in the short term, people like me need to be obnoxious. That's it.
Thank you, Cece, and thank you, Anita. At this time, I'll open it up to anybody in attendance who has any questions related to our COVID-19 updates. If you could, please use the raise hand function at this time, located on the bottom of your toolbar under the participants icon. If you are having trouble finding the raise hand function, you can feel free just to wave furiously at your camera and we'll call on you from there. Mr. Centauri, I see you raising your hand. If you could, just state your name and address before you ask your question. Go right ahead, sir.
Tony Centauri, 118 Gray Birch. I would suggest that the towns seek a role as more as a facilitator rather than actually doing injections, helping people getting to the sites. And I also know that Walgreens and CVS are setting up clinics for vaccinations, and they're going to be doing that online, setting up online pretty, pretty shortly. So those are going to help. But I wouldn't get the town involved in giving shots. I mean, you're, you're asking for trouble.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other comments or questions related to Blythe's COVID-19 updates? I am seeing no virtual hands. I am seeing no real hands. And with that, we'll be moving on. Our next item this evening is our public comment period. This is the period in which anybody who is in attendance has the ability to share with the board or the town administrator related to anything within our scope that is not listed elsewhere on the agenda for around three minutes. If anybody has something that they'd like to share this evening, again, please use the raise hand function or wave furiously at your camera and we'll call on you. Once again, I am seeing no hands. And with that, we will be moving on. Our next agenda item this evening is the presentation of the MIA 2021 Risk Management Award to the town of Norfolk for outstanding work in the area of facilities management. Blythe, take it away.
So we don't often get to have items like this on our agenda, so I'm pretty excited tonight to tell you that the town of Norfolk was awarded, actually, I think it's a 2020 Risk Management Award, to be perfect about it, from our insurance carrier, who, as you know, is MIA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association. And MIA for property and casualty coverage, covers just about every community in the state and some other entities. I think there's actually over 400 clients. And every year, they take a look at the, the activities in the area of risk management and wellness and and give awards to the communities that they think have really gone above and beyond, you know, made progress in those, in those areas or really demonstrated a commitment, commitment that is far and away, you know, above, above the others. And this year, we, the town of Norfolk was awarded one of those risk management awards. Really almost solely due to the efforts of our facilities director, our shared facilities director, Matt Hafner. And so the actual award certificate is in your packet. So Matt is here, as well as both David Labonte, our, our representative for MIA, our count rep is here with us, and Ed Dorgan, who is a senior risk management manager at MIA, who really is the boots-on-the-ground with communities, working on these sorts of things. They're here to give you a little color as to why Norfolk stood out this year and what Matt in particular has done to really move Norfolk forward compared to his, his colleagues in the industry. So I'm very proud of him. I know the rest of the departments are very proud of him. I can see Ingrid smiling. It's a, it's a special moment, and I just wanted to make sure he was recognized. So if you're okay with that, I'd like to turn this over to David and, and Ed for a few words.
Great. Blythe, thank you. Hi, everyone. My name's David Labonte. I'm, as Blythe said, on the senior con executive at MIA. I work closely with Blythe and Scott on the insurance program. Ed Dorgan partners with me on rolling out the risk management activities for the town. Those who are familiar with MIA, MIA really likes to emphasize risk management best practices. Ed is one of five risk management consultants that we have. As Blythe mentioned, we have over 400 municipal entities across the state. Ed's fortunate enough to kind of work in the Norfolk area with me on a lot of accounts. Over the last two years, Ed has really worked closely with Matt on rolling out some of the property management initiatives that MIA is looking to see implemented in each community. Over the last few years, the MIA program has had some pretty large property-related losses. So that's why we've put a lot of resources and focus on trying to control those types of claims. Each year at our annual meeting, you know, last, our last meeting was the virtual meeting, the first time ever, on the 21st and 22nd. And I know Ed was one of five that kind of went back and gets asked, who is, you know, doing something best practice-wise? Who is, you know, working with you, you know, closely to control losses? So Ed, you know, really put together, you know, some thoughtful thoughts and came up with Norfolk, and I'll let Ed kind of jump into, you know, some of the, some of the initiatives that have been implemented over the last few years that really have controlled the town's losses. So with that, I'll pass it over to Ed.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening. My name's Ed Dorgan. I'm, as Blythe and David mentioned, I'm a senior risk manager for MIA, and we do provide multiple lines of insurance coverage, as Blythe had mentioned, for over 400 cities, towns, and public entities. I help as a risk manager for about 70 of those, Norfolk being one of them. I mean, as you often heard on with Dave and Blythe, you heard term above and beyond partnership, collaboration. And so a big thing with this reward, you've heard of, you know, David mentioned with property claims, but it first goes back the collaboration and partnership with Norfolk's leadership, Blythe Robinson, Scott Bragdon in HR. Just their, their wealth of knowledge, working with them, government and the insurance program. I wanted to thank them for their partnership in this. Last, Matt Hafner. His day-to-day operations with his facility team led to this award, and I'm going to give you a few insight and examples. I've known Matt coming up on almost four years now, and I'm very big with first impressions. And my first impressions when I met Matt, he's a very motivating individual. Someone who's always turned it better, you know, the situation around him, specific to facilities, but also people as well. So I thought that was a great, big first impression. When we were asked, my individuals, when we look, look for things with awards like that, I thought that was a great quality to have. He's always asking the right questions to, you know, Ed, how can I lower the risk exposure in property for Norfolk? And it's always followed up with the question of, you know, and does MIA have anything to assist us with this? And as Dave Labonte had mentioned, over the past three years, property losses and claims have been the leader throughout Massachusetts. So one of the things we worked on this year for a project, which I wanted to speak on, is the Hartford Steam Sensor Program. In simplest terms, what that is, is a series of heat, temperature, and water leak sensing equipment. And when we approached Blythe and Matt, we were able to put in some of your buildings. And the whole theory behind this, again, with our property claims issues we've been having, is really try to prevent any pipe-related fracture, winter claims. Right off the bat, again, just to speak in Matt, one of the first things I, they told me was his motivation and involvement to want to improve things. So he was one of the first individuals to work with us. So we sent the sensors out, he installed. You know, but it didn't stop there. Soon after Matt invited us out, and I was able to tour and get a really good understanding of his theory of these sensors. On his placement and how it should work, which I thought was great, but while I was out there, it was really my first you know, situation of seeing a day-to-day and the fact that he was sharing it with us. So I left there that day, walked away very impressed with his efforts. Another thing we talked about pandemic, which is a stressful situation for all of us, I mean, more specifically with facilities and procedural cleaning. What I often do is my relationship with Matt, I would reach out and at times maybe learn a little bit about he, he has a great skillset. Expecting a phone call back, I was actually quite surprised at the written protocol he sent and the detail involved with it. And I was just blown away by it. And he's, we share that type of information with me so we can try to educate other members as well. And lastly, throughout the year, MIA hosts a series of complimentary training that we partner with other groups, the Mass Facilities Association, OSHA, the DLS, which is your governing body. And again, Matt's efforts with that of always wanting to participate with these programs and gain that knowledge on how to better protect the facilities in Norfolk. And it's just not me as well. I have over 70 other communities with Matt's counterparts, and he's very well-known amongst his peers too. When the names mention his class, back when we could go in person in class, it seems like he was always in the front of the class. Now we're all virtual, but, but again, I just wanted to thank Matt, Blythe, Scott, just for your involvement. For this to work, there really has to be a collaboration and partnership. So we really appreciate it. You know, so congratulations again. Hopefully soon down the road, I wish we could have did this in person and shaped all your hands. So we're really proud of you. And so congratulations again, and I look forward to several more years, hopefully, of this continued partnership and success. So thank you very much. Congratulations, Matt.
Thank you very much, David and Edward. I really appreciate your kind words. Ingrid, was there something that you wanted to share as well?
Thank you very much, Kevin. I just wanted to say how pleased I am to see Matt being recognized tonight. As you have heard previously, and I'll try to keep it brief, but Matt has really done an unbelievable job of protecting the resources and assets of the town. If you go into any of our schools, they are cleaner than they have ever been. They are safer than they've ever been. I think he has been at the forefront and, and ahead of the game in terms of reducing our environmental impact, increasing recycling, transitioning to using green products, making, he spent a lot of time in our boiler rooms making preventative changes. If Matt doesn't know what the issue is, he researches it. He has a developed plan. He's very responsive, and I don't think that the town and the community probably realizes how many hours he puts in, how hard he works, and the caliber of the work that we get and the benefit to the town is really immeasurable. So I'm really proud of Matt tonight. I am so thrilled that he's part of our team, and I just wanted to share that with the community. So thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Ingrid. Well, there's not much left to say about Matt. Everybody's pretty much covered everything. I can tell you that as a new select board member, my first interactions with Matt included a lot of crossed eyes because of his intention to detail and his communication and his willingness to share everything he possibly can in one fell swoop. But I could say that, you know, as time went by, I gained an incredible appreciation for that level of detail because I saw the kind of results it provided for the town, the savings and the foresight that it gave us to be able to manage everything we needed to manage. So Matt, while I'm absolutely completely floored about you getting this award for the town, I'm not surprised. This is something that seems to be a recurring theme with you. So once again, and I'm sure I'll be saying it again in the future. Thank you so much for everything you do for us. It's really appreciated.
Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate the kind words. And Ed, the check is in the mail. Thank you very much. It was worth every penny. Thank you, David, as well. Thank you, Ingrid. And thank you to my team also. That's, I'm getting all the, I'm getting all the recognition, but I have an amazing team that, if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be getting any of these awards. My assistant, my deputy, Matt Mallory, is just the quiet one, but he's truly behind a lot of these efforts and couldn't do it without him. So thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anita, is there something you want to share?
I was going to tell a story.
Go right ahead.
I know you like when I tell a story. So I had the privilege with Ingrid of being there when Matt was hired. And I was at HL Day, and I, I loved HL Day so very much. I loved that school. But I remember the first time walking that building with Matt Hafner. And the way he looked at the building, like I wanted him to be the one, he looked at that building with so much care and attention, and he saw the building in a way that I had never seen it before. And, and Ingrid and I talked, like, this is the one, this is the one we want. Because of the, the, just the way he cares so deeply to have everything be done well and done right. And he wants it to work and he wants it to work for 50 years, not for three. And I just really, I know him personally, really admire him and I want to say congratulations.
Thanks, Anita. Cece, anything to add?
Well, I know it's all been said before, but I have never met an opportunity to speak that I haven't seized on, so I'll just take it briefly. I think the world of Matt. I think that more people should get to know Matt and know the kind of work that he does, that he's there early, he stays late. And I know that there are a lot of people across the Commonwealth who also stay early and stay late or get there early and stay late. And, but they're not Matt. And we have Matt and we're excited about that. And I'm just thrilled that an organization has come in and acknowledged that outside of sort of the four corners of the town of Norfolk. That's a big deal. And we're very lucky to have Matt. And I think that the people in the town should know about this. I'm sure they will and know that this is the caliber of person out there taking care of them. So congratulations.
All right, Matt. Well, I think that we've done our jobs in pumping you up as much as possible for one meeting. But if you need any more, we look forward to the next award that comes down the pike. Thank you so much again. Blythe, anything to add before we move on?
I'm very grateful that I've got Matt on the team. And we did consider adding to the capital plan, having all the doors widened, you know, get him through, you know, in the next, in the next couple of weeks, but I decided against it. And, but we'll hear more about his capital plan a little bit later in the meeting. Thank you, Matt.
All right. Our next item this evening is to please consider approval of street sign replacement throughout Norfolk. Blythe, this would be our third take on this item. Would you mind taking us through where we are and if anything new has arisen?
Where we are is when, at the last meeting, we left off with your asking us to reach out to the State Department of Transportation, asking them for their feedback about the possibility of approving signs that would not completely meet the MUTCD regulations. They'd, they'd consider something a little different for Norfolk than what is in that standard and as well as reaching out to vendors to see if we can find someone who would make a sign, perhaps with a pole that's breakable and is more in compliance with the standard than that. And unfortunately, and I always hate to be in this position, we haven't been successful in that. We have reached out to the DOT on, I don't even know how many occasions, but I know it's been not quite daily, but almost that much. And they have declined to answer and provide any guidance to us. If I had to take a guess at why, I think they probably would rather not be wrapped up in a local decision about whether to change them or not, because they're probably guessing unlikely to approve something that didn't meet that. And as to the sign companies, the one that we have been working with said they, they've reached to the point where they felt they could not assist us with making signs that didn't meet the standard. They were concerned about liability if there was a problem later. And we have not been able to reach another company. We've been reaching out, but haven't reached anyone who is willing to make the signs as we've been discussing. So we're back to kind of the middle of this conversation, which is really, it's, I think, is board, is road commissioners, it's a decision of yours whether you want to stay with where we're at with the type of signs we have today and continue putting those in. Because we know that there's no absolute, you know, federally mandated deadline or, or major penalty if we don't. Or if you are amenable to adopting a color standard, like we've talked about for horizontal signs. And we will slowly over time, put in new signs as streets come in, replace broken or missing signs and slowly start to replace the hard, the vertical ones with horizontal. On a light note, we did have a call from a resident you know well, suggesting that perhaps we replace them over time and raffle them off. Might actually have people who would like to pay to keep the old one. And I do know that the planning board, for what, or just for your knowledge, did have a consensus that they thought they should be replaced. I'll just offer that as information. So that's where we are right now.
Thank you, Blythe. You know, when we first started with this initiative, it was brought forward by you and DPW leadership based on two basic premises, right? The first, that we were not in adherence with state and federal requirements for how a street sign should be constructed and presented. And two, that there would be a cost savings compared to what we currently utilize as of today. During the course of these fantastic conversations where we've dug into the details of these requirements and these statutes, it seems that there's some ambiguity in terms of when and how these are to be changed. To which we kind of shot back and said, well, hey, look, we have a lot of people that really like these signs. Why don't we try to work with DOT and see if there's a way that we can maintain some of this look and feel? From what you're saying, it sounds like DOT has kind of pushed themselves away from the table and doesn't want to get involved with that. And so I think at this point, I'd be sitting on the side of the fence that says, look, if they're not willing to give us some direction on it, well, we're just going to keep what we have until they tell us what we should have. And I guess one can make the argument that, well, they do that via the, the requirements, via the statutes, via what we have in place or what they say are the standards that we should be choosing from. But I would have loved for them to engage with us a little bit more so that we would have been able to get some definitive direction as to how and if we'd be able to maintain the current look and feel. So at this point, I don't know if I'd be as motivated to change them as I was when it was first proposed, but I would be more than open to hearing the perspective of the rest of the board, starting with Anita.
I was going to send it to Cece because she's been so articulate on this matter. So why don't we have Cece go first?
That's awesome. And then to that, I will have a complete lack of articulation, but that's all right. So I'm with you, Kevin. I understand. I mean, I think essentially what I would approve, which I think is echoing what you're saying, is come back when you've got something more, right? From my perspective right now, we sort of learned kind of as a, oh, by the way, footnote that the signs were going to get changed. And all of our radar went up because the signs are important to the constituency or to us or to both. And we wanted to know more. And what we were told, at least at the outset, was, well, it's, it's the law and the liability and the death and the carnage and you just need to do it. And then we started looking into it and I'm not going to speak too much to the liability from a standpoint that I certainly understand that whatever it is needs to be retro-reflective. But in terms of the carnage, et cetera, I guess I'm not going to speak to that so much either. But then I said, well, let's look at the law. And what I kept looking at didn't answer the sort of emphatic assertion that without this, it was going to be just awful. And so we, if my recollection serves me, a couple of weeks ago said, come back. What our concern, or at least my concern, if I'm, if I'm clear, I don't want to speak for anyone else. My concern at the outset was I don't like to sort of the sort of fear porn, that if you don't do this, bad things will happen. And trust me, that's what the law says. Because when I looked at the law, that's not what I saw. I saw some intimation that there needed to be certain regulations, but I didn't see the prescriptions that I had been assured existed. And, and I don't think that anyone made it up. I think that either they misread it or they heard it or it actually exists, right? It's very possible it exists, but not in what I was given. So I wanted more information. And if my recollection serves me, the last time we were before you all, I said that if, without more information, I would be voting to leave them the way they are or just to kick the can down the road. We have the benefit of some time. Nobody's going to be engaging in fixing the roads such that we would also be changing the signs, with the exception of the sign that we decided we would just leave as a green sign for some, for a particular amount of time, at least a few weeks, if not more, right? A couple of months, maybe no earlier than April. So I feel like we still have the time that if somebody could convince someone to write a letter, I'll read it or, or show me a statute that actually says what I'm being told it says, as opposed to the preamble to a somewhat tangentially related statute that has nothing to do with the issue at hand, I'll read it. But today, I still think that we don't have enough information, given how important it is to certain people within the constituency. I don't have enough information to vote either way. And so if I were forced to vote today, I would vote no. So it would be my preference to kick the can a little further so people can get me more information. I appreciate that now I'm hearing that the Department of Transportation or whomever it is that's supposed to write the letter, won't write the letter. I'd love to see the communication to that body and the, to understand a little more about why it is that they are refusing. Do they never write a letter? Is it really that in this instance, they don't want to be on the hook when the people all end up dying because they weren't able to take a left onto Myrtle Street? I want to know more. So from my perspective, I don't think that I have enough information to vote today. I don't really necessarily want to vote today. And to be clear, I'm not, I, I can tell when I get to Norfolk by the white signs. I like that. I'm not going to say that I would be one of the people who would be devastated without them. I don't know that I would be. I would want to vote in accordance with the law and in accordance with what things actually cost in terms of pricing things, but I still don't feel like I have enough information in order to do that. And so it would be my preference to wait until people can get me more information other than sort of this broad brush, oh, we're not going to give you a price on that because we don't want to be stuck with a liability. If that's true, I'd like to see that communication as well. And I'm not saying that Blythe is making it up. I'm just saying that maybe there was a misinterpretation of a phone call. I'd like to see the assertion that we won't give you a price for a particular kind of sign because our view of the statute is that the Department of Transportation won't condone it when in the same breath, the Department of Transportation is saying, no, we're not going to tell you whether we condone it or not. Lastly, the last thing that I would say, because I know I'm sort of bandying about, I would say that I'm not ready to vote on it. If I was pressed, I would vote to leave the signs the way they are because nobody has given me any concrete evidence beyond their limited assertions that they think that it should be a different sign. So I would vote no unless we kicked the can. But in addition, I would also like to say that I appreciate that we're getting correspondence and communications from people within the town. I like people within the town writing us. They're engaged, there's things that interest them. But in this instance, what I'm seeing a lot of are people writing saying it's outrageous that you're going to change all of the signs. We have all this other stuff that you should be spending your money on. And I would urge those people before the next time that they took pen to paper or keystroke to imaginary paper, to go back and look at what it is that we're actually deciding. Because we're not deciding to go and change every sign today. If you're going to write an email that is arguably pretty darn snarky. And actually, by the way, I'm sort of aligned with the people who've written these. And I read them and think, you know what? Maybe I don't have a problem with a green sign because I don't need people talking to me this way. But if you're going to write a snarky email to me, go back, learn the facts and then write your snarky email. Because we're not saying that we're going to get rid of all the signs. The question presented is whether or not as signs need to be replaced, as roads are being fixed such that the sign needs to be replaced, that those signs are replaced with signs that are similar, but arguably not in compliance with the law to the signs we have now, or whether they are new, potentially less expensive, potentially legally compliant signs. That's the question presented. Figure out what we're talking about, write your email songs snark and I'm delighted to read it. So that's my opinion.
So I was right. You were very articulate about that, very nicely said. And I'm old enough to have played Kick the Can and it was a really fun game. You played it kind of at dark, it was almost dark, it was very fun, Kick the Can. I thought a lot about this because I was thinking about how would I vote and what would I vote? And I think I kind of go back to when I walked in and asked for the papers to run for my job, for this job. And I think one of the things I promised in, or I promised myself or that I thought that I was bringing forward for Norfolk was the ability to listen and to listen and to try to be objective and to try to make decisions that were fair and honorable. And in this case, I haven't had much email, I haven't had much to listen to because I haven't heard too much. But wow, when it comes to the signs, there is listening to be done and some of it is snarky. I agree. We could be nice, like, let's be nice, let's just be nice to people. But the people care a lot about the signs. One of the things I'd like to clear up right now is if we choose, like if we voted right now, which is highly unlikely, that we're going to change over to the new kind of sign, it does not cost us any money, it's already in the budget. So this would not be an additional expense to the town of Norfolk. There's an annual budget amount, I think it was $6,000 or something to repair signs. Every town has this amount that, because they gradually replace the signs as they, you know, so it's not going to cost us any additional money. But what I'm hearing from the people in the town, the people who reach out, is they like the signs. And so in this case, I feel like I need to listen. And I love the idea of kicking the can. There's not a sense of urgency. There is the one sign that we needed to replace and we have a sign to replace it. And I love the idea of kicking the can for a while until we have either more information or to see that whole email thread, because there was an incomplete email thread. And I'm, I'm, I would vote for kicking the can.
Thank you, Anita, and thank you, Cece. Okay, so I mean, it, it sounds like we're, we have some consensus in terms of the way we'd like to proceed with this individual item. And I think it also goes with saying that, you know, as road commissioners, it's incumbent upon us to be able to make these decisions for the community as a whole, based on our roles. So, you know, should we have the confidence to move forward with some, a change of some kind, with some direction from the DOT or with some more detail as requested? That's something that we would absolutely take on. It just feels that at this point, we don't have that confidence to move forward. So Blythe, with that, I believe that gives you what you need in terms of this agenda item for us to be able to move on.
It does.
Thank you so much. And once again, I also don't want this to be perceived as a knock on those that brought it forward. And this is the responsibility and the job of those who did that. And we appreciate that. This is just what we feel to be our responsibility and our job as road commissioners and select board members. So thank you, Barry. Thank you, Blair, and thank you, Blythe.
And we will carry that out.
Much appreciated. Our next agenda item this evening is to please consider reauthorization of an intermunicipal agreement with Surg Services Group. Blythe, a little bit of background, please.
Yes, so 25 years ago, this group was formed for the purpose of working together, all 23 towns, to procure the various items that all of them need that weren't otherwise available in another way. So that there was an economy of scale to go out to bid broadly for everybody on the things that everybody needed and save each community from spending a lot of time and perhaps money building bid specs themselves and running all these processes to buy pretty mundane things like all the, a lot of materials we use for DPW, copy paper for the town and so on. And it was formed just after what we call Chapter 30B of the Mass General Laws came into play that put in place a lot of these requirements. So the original agreement was signed and said, well, it could be, you know, just kind of re-approved every year for 25 years. And then the 25th year, you have to actually decide to get an approval of all the communities or whoever wants to continue to do so. And so here we are at the silver anniversary. And we strongly recommend that the board reauthorize this agreement. We spend about $4,000 a year to support the organization doing all this for us. And I don't have any math for you, but I'm confident that we would spend far more just in staff time to try to mount all these bids ourselves. I know, I know what we go through when we're just trying to do something simple like, get the, it seems simple, like get the library painted next year. Time and effort to have some be able to do this on our behalf is great. So there's a letter from council to Surg in your packet, a copy of the reauthorization agreement and the original agreement from 25 years ago, should you want to look at that.
Thank you, Blythe. Typically with agreement reauthorizations and whatnot, we do a quick review, outline some of our questions and kind of move along. When this one identified that the period was for 25 years, that kind of threw up a red flag with me and had me dig a little bit deeper to ensure that this is something that makes sense. And obviously, as you had stated, this is almost a necessity in terms of our ability to function with the structure that we currently have in place. So at this time, I'll open it up to any questions or comments from the rest of the board, starting with nobody. Head shakes all around. Very good. I'll open it up to any questions from those who are joining us this evening related to our current agenda item of our intermunicipal agreement with SIRG. No hands, no waving, moving along.
I would just add that we can, we can decide to remove ourselves from the group. We don't have to stay for 25 years, but it's worked for us for that long. So I'm guessing it will continue to be very valuable.
Well, in noting that, you found a way for me to go through it line by line, so I wouldn't throw that away by noting those things. And with that, I would move that the Norfolk Select Board vote to reauthorize and amend the intermunicipal agreement that created the Southeastern Regional Services Group so as to extend the term of that agreement for a period of 25 years from February 21st, 2021, subject to any rights of termination or withdrawal, with all other terms of the original agreement remaining in place without change, and to authorize the chair to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Bantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Our next item this evening is to please consider donating an Old Town Hall parking sticker to Norfolk Community Television for a fundraising auction to support the station. Blythe, what do we have for this agenda item?
So earlier this year, you and I were reached by Tom from NCTV to ask about this. And originally, I think it was a supporting the station. I probably should have changed the title of this a little bit because I was happy, I was thrilled to hear that after this request went out, a lot of support came from the community for the station. And so Tom got back to us and said, hey, we really think of changing this to support, you know, people in need in the community. And we had asked you for some type of donation before. We kind of still are, but we look to auction those off, that off, once we receive it. You know, is there anything you can provide? I'm like, well, we don't have a lot of stuff to give away. It's not kind of our business model. We don't have much swag, you know, no coffee cups or pins or things like that that communities used to have back in the day. The only thing I could come up with was one thing we sell is parking sticker. Now, those are not a hot commodity right now, given the pandemic and people not commuting as much. But it has some value and hopefully people will be able to commute more in the future. Maybe that's an idea. So that's what's behind the suggestion that's in your packet. Just a reminder, the calendar for stickers goes from October 1st to September 30th. So you could choose, if you like the idea, you could choose to do one through the end of this particular year. You could do it for a year and a half. The sticker for Old Town Hall is $150. That's its face value, if you will, for a year. So it's not a significant impact to the town, and we have not sold them all this year, as you would expect. So that's, that was my thought, but I'm certainly, if the board has other ideas, that would be great. And Tom is here to join the meeting just to chat with you about it, if you'd like to have any other input from him.
Thank you, Blythe. Welcome, Tom. Would you like to share a little bit about the intent?
Yeah, absolutely. So as Blythe mentioned, this kind of started off as a a campaign to promote the launch of our video on-demand service. And so we were reaching out to local businesses to put together a gift basket and have a, you know, an online contest where someone wins some products from local businesses. But the response that we got was overwhelming. There were so many companies, individuals, departments that were willing to help out and so generous. And I didn't get a single no from any, any phone or email conversation that I had with any local business, including the police department, the fire department, and hopefully the town. So it became clear that this marketing initiative kind of had become too big for itself. So after some internal conversations on what to do, we decided to raffle off the items and services that were donated to continue soliciting them and to use the money to get it into the hands of Norfolk residents who truly need it and are suffering due to the pandemic. As Katie Jefferson put it, it's just too much, it was just too much of an opportunity to use for self-promotion. And we should use these donations to raise some money and do some good with it. So actually, last week then, Katie has been talking to Al Bowza, and I've been speaking with Jack Campbell of the Norfolk Lions Club. And they have now come on to be co-hosts of this event, raffle. So it's going to be a raffle put on for NCTV, by NCTV, and the Norfolk Lions Clubs. And the intention, like I said, is to raffle these items off to funnel the funds, which the Lions will take care of, to those in dire need of it due to COVID. And as, as they see fit, that, you know, they're, they obviously know the people who, who are in trouble. And the second goal of this would be to get exposure and give recognition to the many of the small businesses who have been so generous to donate products or services to this raffle. So that, those are the two things that we're trying to accomplish with this. Kind of happened really fast, turning from an initiative to turn to promote our VOD platform to trying to do something great for the community. So.
Thank you very much, Tom. And, you know, even if this was something that we were doing just to support NCTV, after all of the hours that you have all put in to help us, whether it be staying late for meetings to record or finding ways to stream things or putting together edits for shows, me turned around quickly to get information out to the community. You guys have been an incredible partner with all of that. So on that merit alone, you know, I would be inclined to do something like this to assist. But even more so now that we understand that the scope is slightly changed to helping those within our own community who are most in need. So thank you very much for continuing down this road with this, even after you had satisfied your initial intent. It's greatly appreciated.
It's, it's greatly appreciated to see a town like this. I'm not, I'm Norfolk. I still don't know how to say it right. I say, I say it differently every time, but I'm really like impressed by how generous and how, how much, like just how nice this community is and how, how everyone has really come together to, to support something.
Thanks, Tom. I'll open it up for the board. Any questions or comments related to our potential donation, starting with Anita?
Yes, the first thing I want to say is thank you, Tom. I think this seems fabulous. This is like a win, 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 win all the way around. It's a win for cable. It's a win for our local businesses and a win for the people who are struggling. And so I, I'm very happy to do a year and a half of parking stickers. I think Blythe, it was brilliant. I think your idea was a brilliant thing. I think that's a really nice thing we can offer that has value and it doesn't affect our budget. So I think that's fabulous, and I would support a year and a half of stickers. Thank you for what you're doing, Tom.
Thank you.
I think it'd be even more brilliant if Blythe offered concierge service from their parked car over up to the train station as well. But, you know, we'll start small and work our way up. Cece, any questions or comments?
Nope. I, once again, whoever's scoring at home 11,426 times, echo Anita. Great idea.
Very good. Thank you. Blythe, the only question I had for you was, do you happen to know the last time that we had all parking passes sold out at Old Town Hall? You're on mute.
Not this current year that we're in, the year before.
We did have an excess of applications. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, you could, you could choose to do more than one. Like, I just said one, but if you think that you want to support more than that, it's completely up to the board.
I think one holds pretty good value, from my perspective. If anybody ever does.
Yep, one, but a year and a half, right? So it's the end of this year and all of next year.
Goes through September 2022.
That's good for me.
All right. At this time, I'll open it up for anybody in attendance for any questions or comments related to our current agenda item on the donation of an Old Town Hall parking sticker. If you have any questions or comments, please use the raise hand function at this time. Seeing no hands. So with that, I would move that the board vote to donate a parking sticker valid through September 2022 to the fundraising campaign being held by Norfolk Community Television. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you very much.
Well, we didn't do it yet. We didn't do it yet. Don't thank us yet. I'll do a roll call vote. Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Bantine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And now it is finalized, Tom. There you go.
All right. Thank you so much, Kevin. Appreciate it. And now everyone else. Tom, just work with Nancy in my office to us, to, for the details.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Have a great night, Tom. Thank you.
You too. Take care.
That brings us to our next agenda item this evening, which is to please discuss a presentation by the school and facilities departments on future capital needs. It seems that we have some of our esteemed representatives here with us this evening. Blythe, would you like to lead us in?
We do. So following the, what we've been doing over the last couple of meetings and giving you a short presentation about various aspects of the capital budget, joining us tonight are the duo of Ingrid, focused on school capital needs, and Matt, who on overall town capital needs with, you know, certainly very knowledgeable about the school's needs as well, to give you two separate presentations to give you the high points of what's coming up the next couple of years and the things that the board should be a little more knowledgeable about as those debates and conversations are going to happen. So it's okay with you. I'll toss it over to Ingrid.
Sounds good. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come tonight. And we will give you a high-level overview of the items that the school has included in the town capital plan. We also have Thomas Doyle at Midora Champagne, our school committee chair and vice chair here tonight, and Trish Kelly, who's our director of technology. So I practice, I'm not a Zoom user, but I'm going to try and share my screen with you guys so that you can see it. So just give me a second, and I will walk through this presentation. It works. All right. So again, I'm going to just give you a high-level overview. And I would talk about the school needs. Matt will go in greater depth when he does his presentation on the facility side. And then Trish will talk about the capital requests we have for technology. So there are three primary categories. Again, building and facility maintenance and repair that Matt will speak to. I'm going to talk about the biggest capital request we have in the plan is the Freeman Kennedy Expansion Project. I have already presented its greater depths to the select board on this project, so I'll just highlight some of the key points and timeline and costs. And then we do have some capital needs that we want to outline for the committee. When the Freeman Kennedy was built, it was built about 10 years ago, and all of the technology was purchased at the same time. So we are aging out a lot of our essential core instructional materials. So Trish will go in greater depth on those needs with, for you. So starting just with the facilities end of it, I think it's important for the select board to know that back in May 2013, right when the Freeman Kennedy School was completed, we did hire an outside consultant to come in to take a look at our newly constructed school, as well as the HL of Day School, and to look at all of our major operational systems and develop a 20-year long-range capital plan that includes preventative maintenance recommendations as well as timelines for repair and placement as equipment reaches the end of its expected lifespan. So we do have a 20-year plan that we have shared with the town. It does include both preventative maintenance and repair. And then in 2016, when we moved forward with hiring Matt Hafner as our new shared director of facilities, Matt came in, reviewed the plan, and also reviewed performance data, looked at all those operational systems, made some additions and recommendations of changes to that plan. So the requests that we have are based on sort of a long-range overview, again, assessed by Matt Hafner, as well as the outside consultant that we have. The primary areas of need for capital buildings, and again, Matt will go in greater depth. We do have, Freeman Kennedy is now entering its 10th year. We have done some small interior painting as needed, but we do need, the school is aging. And so we do have significant interior painting needs and upkeep needs there, as well as at the HL of Day School. Again, heading into the 10th year, we're looking to recommission the HVAC systems at Freeman Kennedy to make sure they're well-balanced and efficient, and that no changes or adjustments need to be made. We have issues with sewer and septic repair and replacement of parts at the HL of Day School. The boilers at the HL of Day School are 25 years old. And so we need to look at replacement of those boiler systems. And then the HL of Day parking lot, we have a lot of potholes, cracks in the pavement, and curbing needs that we need to look at there. So we need to look at repaving the full parking lot and at the same time, upgrading the lighting out in that parking lot area. Again, Matt is going to present next, and he is much more expert at explaining the specific items that need to be replaced with the sewer and septic system and HVAC. So I will not go into depth, but Matt will provide you more information on those. The biggest capital project we have is the Freeman Kennedy Expansion Project. Again, we are struggling district-wide with increasing enrollment at both schools. When I presented to you last October, we had the consultant that we had brought in to do the enrollment study from Nezdech, present the data and the projections for enrollment. And we had Nezdech take a look at the accepted and approved building projects that the town has, the 40B projects that are underway. We didn't consider pending projects, only ones that are accepted and improved. Based on their projections, we are, we should in the next five years see another 250 students in the Norfolk Public Schools. I know there was some concern. We had 133 kindergarten students last year, and Nezdech was predicting that we would have 164 this year. And there was a lot of skepticism from the town that we would see that kind of real increase. We currently have 169 students enrolled in our kindergarten. So our enrollment actually exceeded the projections there. And they're pretty on track at all the other grade levels. It's a difficult year to assess because we do have more kids that are homeschooling as a result of the pandemic. Some students that have enrolled in religious schools that we expect may be back. So even with that, our enrollment is tracking pretty consistent and over the Nezdech predictions in the early childhood level. Again, I talked in greater depth when we, when I presented before about the space study committee and all the different options we looked at for expansion. The most cost-effective solution was the expansion of Freeman Kennedy. Just to give you an update of where we are with our current building status, at the HL of Day School, we are at capacity. We do not have any open classrooms remaining. Actually, two years ago, we had to convert the teacher's workroom, which is the copier area and printer area, into an instructional space for specialized instruction. This year, because of the COVID-19 safety guidelines and restrictions and the requirement for social distancing in the classroom, we had to take over the art room, the music room, a third of the cafeteria and the school library in order to accommodate instructional spaces for students. So we do not have art, music, library, or a portion of the cafeteria available this year. Based on our, just our current enrollment, next year, we will have to repurpose one of those spaces permanently to accommodate an additional first grade class. So we will be having to repurpose either the art room, the music room, or the maker space for that class. We are hoping to see a decline based on birth rates in kindergarten. And so we would hopefully go down from eight to seven kindergarten classes. And again, that's based on the Nezdech predictions as well as census data. But if we do not see that decline in K enrollment and have to hold at eight classes, then we will lose a second one of those spaces. We just don't have anywhere else to house the classroom. And as I spoke about last time, losing those spaces really impacts our curriculum. You cannot provide the same kind of art instruction or music instruction when teachers are traveling from. You cannot provide the same kind of art instruction or music instruction when teachers are traveling from class to class. You can't bring instruments with you to, from class to class. You can't do clay, pottery and other kinds of artwork in that setting. So it is a significant issue. At the Freeman Kennedy, we have 27 classrooms available for general programming. We also have office spaces and some specially designed spaces for special education program. We will be able to accommodate the growth next year, but beginning in 2022, the Freeman Kennedy will also be at capacity. Any further growth from there will impact those special programs as well. Science, the science lab, art room, music room, they would have to be repurposed to accommodate growth beyond 2022. A lot of the spaces additionally do require significant funding to renovate them to turn them back into a classroom space. They don't all have sinks. The science lab has stations that would have to be removed. So there's a cost involved in that and it would not definitely serve the town well in the long run. It would be a short-term solution, but would not accommodate in the continued growth. Again, when I presented previously, I also talked about some other community needs. Last year, we had 50 families on the waitlist for pre-K. Pre-K is a self-funding program because we charge tuition for students that are general education students. So if we had space, we would be able to expand and absorb a lot of that cost through additional revenue and better serve the community. We just don't have the space to expand that program at this time. We also have a significant need for families for childcare. We have, we run a SAC program for the school. We provide before and after care for, for working families. There are very few other childcare options in Norfolk. The Adirondack Club has one program, but it's very limited. So there's a significant need in Norfolk for childcare. Again, that's a self-funding program, so it isn't a cost to the operating budget, but we do not have the capacity to expand that program at this time due to space. The Freeman Kennedy Expansion Project, when we first built the Freeman Kennedy was actually prior to my beginning in this role. The, the design that was selected was part of the model school program that MSBA was running. And in order to be eligible to be part of the model school program, the architects who designed the building had to have a plan for expansion or for reduction so that the plan in the, the overall architecture would be applicable to many different communities. So Freeman Kennedy was designed with a plan for expansion. And that expansion involves including an addition of a connecting wing between the two wings that go out towards the back of the building. And if we were able to do that expansion and add that additional wing, what we would do would be to put an early childhood center and the main office for special education on the first floor of that building, we would be, have enough space to put in seven preschool classrooms, which meets the current need as well as expansion needs, allowing us to accommodate more families for early childhood education. Also, by moving the preschool and special education offices, we would open up seven spaces at the H L of Day between classrooms and office space. And that would be at least five open classrooms. If we are able to move the server room, we, we create an additional learning space at the H L of Day. And that would allow us to absorb at the lower school that growth and enrollment that we were talking about. Plus, on the second floor, it would create a number of new classrooms for, that would, actually nine classrooms that would meet the growing needs of enrollment at the Freeman Kennedy. So the space study, looking at all the different options, the potential for a third site, portable classrooms, all of that, felt that this was the most cost-effective solution for the town. The, it, it provides a safe and secure and appropriate learning environment for students at all grade levels from pre-K to sixth. It would be a single building project and would, would solve space issues at two different locations. And it would create sufficient space to accommodate a future growth and future projected growth in the town. So this would take care of the, the long-term needs of the town as well. Also, by just focusing on the single expansion project, it limits additional operating annual costs. If you were to go to a third site, you would have to also staff that with a nurse, building secretaries and administrator. But because of the plan that we have in place by moving the special education office, you have an administrator in the new wing and you don't have to add those additional costs. Just for those who haven't seen it, this is the outs exterior view of what the addition would look like. I don't know if I can, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but this is the additional wing that we would be building on. It's about 15,000 square feet. Again, the first floor provides early childhood learning spaces, seven classrooms and special education offices. You can see there would be a separate playground area for those early childhood students and a separate drop-off and pickup and parking lot for pre-K families and families accessing the special education office. If anybody's interested, I think I shared with you the full preliminary design plans so that you can see the interior space layout as well. The potential fundings for this, we would have the opportunity to partner with MSBA. We submitted an application to the MSBA Core Building Program back in April. The MSBA is a little bit delayed and I'll talk about the timeline in, in a minute. But MSBA is now participating in projects that are designed, the, the core program used to just do new buildings. They're now working on and participating in projects that are designed to prevent severe overcrowding, which is what we're already experiencing, experiencing at the H L of Day. You have to be able to substantiate that growth, but we can do that with our current enrollment data as well as the data that we have from Nezdeq and again, through just touring at the H L of Day School. There's a lot of values to partnering with MSBA. Generally, in the past two projects that we've worked on with them, we have received a 53% reimbursement rate, which really cuts your project costs in half. They have a strong reputation of having their projects completed on time and under budget. They have expertise and provide support and oversight throughout the project. And, and they've funded so far over almost $14 billion of school construction projects. So they've learned a lot in their experience. Partnering with the MSBA would sound, would save our town significant cost for construction. So, and then you can see the Freeman Kennedy School project, the, the school opened on time. That project came in almost a million dollars under budget. We also partnered with MSBA on the H L of Day roof replacement. And the, we saw the significant savings on that project. So it was completed, substantial completed, was achieved in a very tight window over the summer. And we were ready to open in September as we intended. And that project came in just over a quarter of a million dollars under budget. The process update, again, we submitted a statement of interest in the core program back in April. What the MSBA typically does, once all the applications are received, they have a team that reviews those applications. They often send out engineers to visit the site, to sometimes architects to take a look at the scope of the project and the feasibility preliminary before they move forward with approving that. Because of COVID-19, MSBA has not had access to a lot of schools and districts to do that kind of site work that's part of the review process. It's been delayed. I spoke with a rep from MSBA last week and they are deep in the review at this time. They expect that they will be recommending projects for their board to consider at their April meeting. And after that, we'll be notifying districts as to whether or not you've been invited to participate with MSBA. If MSBA approved our application, then what would the next steps would be? We would have to go to the town in, at the fall, regular fall town meeting, probably in October. I think he had it this year, sometimes November. And you'd have to request funding for the feasibility and the schematic design portion of the project. That's generally about 10% of the total project costs, which we are predicting, predicting would come in at about $2 million. So that would be the first cost of the town in the capital plan is the request for feasibility study and schematic design. What MSBA reports is from the time that that is approved, it generally takes two, up to two to three years. But they think because our project's smaller, probably two years to get the feasibility study completed, to get all the architectural design work done. That's generally two years from the time the funding's appropriated. Once that is all done, it has to go back to the MSBA board to be reviewed and accepted. Once that happens, the town can then move forward with a vote to approve funding for construction. Again, that's typically two years after the application's approved. So we would be looking for funding for the full construction costs in 2024. This might be slightly behind the timelines in the capital plan, but that has to do with the fact that MSBA is now almost a full year delayed in reviewing those applications. The total estimated cost again is 20 million and that includes a construction escalation cost from the time the study was first, the preliminary design project was first completed. Again, the fiscal implications would be 2022 would be looking for 2 million or 10% of the project cost for schematic design. 2024, the remaining 18 million. Obviously, the final construction costs are subject to the public bidding process. These are cost estimates that were done by the engineering architectural firm that we had based on current market pricing and the square footage and construction costs. If anybody wants additional information, I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight, so I didn't go through the full presentation, but the full presentation that I offered to the board last October, you can view the video if you want to see the, the presentation by Nezdeq's demographic specialist. But you can click on the link if you want to see the space, the full space study presentation that we provided. And also there's a link if you want to learn more about building with MSBA. The other items that we have in the capital request are around technology, so I'm going to turn it over to Trish and then we can take questions on any of the information we presented tonight. So Trish Kelly is our director of technology and Trish, I'll turn it to you and you just let me know when you're ready for the slides to advance.
Thanks, Ingrid. Good evening. My name is Trish Kelly and I am the tech director for Norfolk Public Schools. I would like to begin with a brief introduction of what our small team of four does and then present four slides on our capital budget request. The Norfolk Public Schools Technology Department supports a wide variety of systems, which includes security and surveillance, internal and external phone lines, PA systems, copiers, printers, servers, firewalls, switches, access point. In addition, the technology department supports and maintains software programs for human resources, the business office, food services, transportation, and over 30 programs that support curriculum and instruction. Technology is infused in every classroom, which lends itself well to inquiry-based learning. The technology department provides ongoing professional development opportunities for educators, school teams, district staff to enhance teaching and learning via workshops, seminar series and webinars. Our department provides rich digital resources to support all staff, all students and all families via our engaging, organized, mobile-friendly website. Slide one, we have a picture here of some of our geniuses, our, our tech students that presented at the school committee. And to the left of that, it has our technology vision statement. Norfolk Public Schools inspires, engages and empowers learners to actively use technology resources to question, collaborate and extend their learning beyond the classroom walls. Through child-led inquiry, analysis, creating and sharing, students develop the skills necessary to thrive in a connected global environment. Next slide, Ingrid. The technology department works with many stakeholders to provide a robust, reliable network in addition to a solid ecosystem. The goal of our department has always been to properly plan and forecast the district technology needs in order to make informed decisions that are proactive and not reactive. Our work revolves around the mindset of reuse, recycle, rethink and rebuild. Meaning, our team first looks to see if a product can be repaired. Can parts be replaced rather than replacing the whole device? Can the product be reused in a different way to extend its life? Can we find a new use for an older product? Can we rethink the product so it lasts longer? And how best to recycle a product? The tech team has two members that I like to refer to as MacGyver. And I might be dating myself here if people don't know MacGyver. But they are unbelievable because they can rebuild just about anything. And they do, which saves the district money when it comes to repairs, reuse and recycling. The team is very conservative in its approach to purchasing. Our team is always seeking out technology grant opportunities at the state, federal and local level. And we have been fortunate to be the recipient of grants on several different occasions. We also have a very generous PTO. And over the years, they have supported some of our technology initiatives, which we are very grateful for. Hence, this critical forward thinking allowed the district to pivot last March when the pandemic hit. It allowed Norfolk Public Schools to continue delivering instruction without interruption. The capital budget contains investment options that the technology department knows would yield the best possible return. The team continuously vets vendors and seeks those with reliable and trustworthy reputations who provide a quality product and understand the importance of supply chain management. Slide three, Ingrid. The technology is integrated into all aspects of operation within our schools. The technology's life cycle has been extended through our ongoing maintenance, updates and upgrades. However, we are now approaching the replacement phase in these core categories of our infrastructure. Below are the capital plan requests for fiscal year 22 to 26. I would like to briefly discuss these items as most of them are at or near the replacement phase. Following this slide is the projective timeline in the budget for each one of these categories. Security and surveillance system, we currently have an access surveillance system that has areas in need of maintenance. The age of the cameras are preventing us from being able to upgrade the firmware. Firmware updates are critical, partly to mitigate vulnerabilities found in camera models currently deployed at both schools. In addition, the quality of resolution greatly diminished compared to updated models of available cameras. District-wide NEC phone system in servers, our current phone system was originally released in 2007 with an end-life marker of 2018. Being an end-life product, we are no longer able to receive upgrades for server equipment and it's difficult to procure replacement equipment should any parts of the system break down. Licenses for additional phones are no longer available, capping our system at the current size. This system is no longer scalable and cannot be expanded to meet our needs without purchasing and migrating to the new server release. The district network and firewall and content filter, currently we have a Cisco firewall. Firewalls are to be replaced between three and five years. Our should be replaced in 2025. In organizations, firewall is an integral to its operation and it's our biggest line of defense for internet traffic and student protection. Along with maintaining content firewalls for onsite traffic, a comprehensive firewall is key to handling internet attacks and malware instances. State and federal laws require schools to monitor and filter their students' web usage. It is also key to allowing bandwidth access for our traffic across the district. The next two items, number four and five, these projects should be done simultaneously. And both of these are at the H L of Day School. The H L of Day wiring, infrastructure renovation in the H L of Day wireless upgrade and replacement. The H L of Day switch equipment is housed in an inhospitable environment, which is deteriorating the life expectancy of this equipment, causing us to regularly maintain and obtain replacements for equipment at an expedited pace. Additionally, it's impacting equipment performance causes latency across our network. The scope of the project would include replacement of our current degraded switches as well as rewiring. The older wiring is original to building construction and is no longer able to sustain the bandwidth required by modern wireless access points. We need to upgrade the wiring infrastructure for effective deployment of wireless, which will then get us optimum, optimum performance on our wireless access points. The smart boards at Freeman Kennedy are already at 10 years old. The replacement for smart boards usually run around eight, so we're pushing the smart boards there. We're hoping to replace them in 2024, maybe 2025. We split that. These were part of the building project budgeted years ago and have now surpassed their life expectancy. However, these interactive whiteboards have become a standard classroom tool for teachers to present and interact with our fully for teachers to present and interact with our fully digital curriculum materials. The next item is the Freeman Kennedy wireless upgrade. Again, we need to replace the end-of-life access points. These access access points are no longer currently supported. And the last item is staff and student device upgrade and replacement. These devices are part of the daily life for staff and students. Staff and student devices are on a six-year replacement cycle. The problem is when you go beyond that cycle, which we have had to do several times, is that once you are at the end-of-life expectancy, the operating system can no longer be updated, and then you have compatibility problems with all of your software. The next slide, Ingrid. There we go. So this slide here is based on the projects, updates, and upgrades just mentioned. This slide indicates the timeline of the project as well as the cost per fiscal year. So we have from twenty-two to twenty-six here, and we itemized all of the items that I stated above and how many we need of each and what the total cost is. So over the four years, we're looking at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I thank you for your time and consideration in listening to our capital budget request.
And we are happy to, if I can figure out how to exit the screen share, we are happy to take any questions that people might have.
Well, thank you very much, Ingrid and Trish, for the incredibly detailed outlines and presentation. Very informative from my perspective, but as well as you had mentioned, Ingrid, much of what we've already heard before. I know that I've asked questions before about how they relate to the projections for student enrollment, given the outline that you just shown us, that we wouldn't actually be looking at anything actually being built at Freeman Kennedy until two thousand and twenty-four. What do the kindergarten projections look like going up through that year?
There's a slight drop next year, and then it begins to recover a little bit. So we are expecting, and again, we opened registration and it looks like so far it is kind of the NesDex prediction for decline. So I think there will, if that holds true, we will be short of classroom next year, which we'll have to look at those spaces that identified. But the following year, we will be probably short two classrooms. They start to come up again. So again, you know, this is projections based on the real estate market holding and variables holding consistent. But we will be, as I, as I mentioned when I presented before in the fall, we will be for several years short of space at HL of Day. We will be without an art room or music room or a supplemental space for multiple years until we can get the projects completed.
Thank you. I think it's it's good to note that that's a reality. That's not something that we're projecting or that might happen. That's where we are right now. My only other question was related to the contingency for what happens if we do not be, for not selected for the current MSBA distribution this year. What does the plan look like after that point?
So the town would have a couple of different options. You can choose to move forward with the construction project without MSBA funding. That does double the cost to the town because, you know, on a twenty million dollar project, if we have fifty percent participation rate, it cuts your cost down to ten million for that addition. A lot of districts have chosen and a lot of towns have chosen to move forward without MSBA as a partner on a project, which means the town absorbs the full cost, but also the responsibility of project oversight and bidding and all of the rest of that. So that would be an option. The other option would be to reapply a second year to MSBA for consideration. When we did the HL of Day roof, we we applied twice before we were accepted into the program for reimbursement. Because everything is already delayed, MSBA has said that they expect to make announcements on decisions in April and then open next year's application process immediately after. So the town would have the option. It would mean that you'd be short space for one more year. But by the, you know, we would have better enrollment data at that time to consider. And again, you you run the risk of you may not be accepted year two. So I think the town would have to weigh the value of moving forward independently and the additional cost you'd be absorbing or the potential of delaying the project one more year, reapplying, and then making a decision at that time. But we do not have, we don't have another option for space. You know, we're working with what we have.
Thank you. And I lied. I have one more question. I'm sorry. As it pertains to the addition and looking at the projections for enrollment, how many years does that buy us in terms of accommodating for expected capacity increases?
Well, the enrollment studies that we had done, we really looked out about ten years. So, you know, given things, trends holding, that should really maintain what the the district needs for current growth. I think if the town expands much beyond that, then you're going to have other issues beyond the schools. But our understanding from our work with the architecture firm that designed the study and our enrollment projections would be that that one addition would solve pretty long-term the the projected enrollment gains that you're going to be seeing.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. I'll stop monopolizing the Q and A period and open it up to my fellow board members, starting with Anita.
First of all, ho. It's nice to see so many familiar faces. And so I just thank you first of all for your presentation. There's clearly so much work and and energy went into that. So thank you for all of that. And then I just want to say for the people who are out there who are thinking, well, they don't really need an art room or they don't really need music, that that arts and the sports are the difference between being just awake and being alive. And so for our students, those are critical parts of our curriculum. They're not optional fluffy extras. They're a critical piece. And those rooms and the things that our teachers are doing in those rooms are very special and magical. And there are kids who wait all year to go to art, all week to have their time at art or have their time with with Mr. Goodwin at PE or, so those are really important spaces for our students and a critical part of the education that the kids get. And thank you and best of luck.
DC, any questions or comments?
Nope, none at this time.
I did also want to say I added for you in your packets the closeout of the HL of Day roof. I know the select board was interested, and I presented to the school committee two weeks ago on that project. So we did complete the the construction project. We have gone through the audit process and the town has received the final payment from MSBA. And the project, as I said, did come in two hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars under budget. So that, and and again, we've completed the closeout, so the town of Norfolk has already received final payment.
Thank you, Ingrid. And just a quick note, the MSBA roof project was a total of what again?
So the town, town meeting authorized the project cost was three million five hundred thousand. The total expended was, I'm sorry, it's hard to see, three million two hundred and thirty-six thousand. The unexpended amount was two hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Then again, the scope of that project included not just the shingling. There was some major structural work in the addition, reinforcement of trusses we built. In the construction project, we ran into quite a few problems in terms of finding rot in some of the wood that had to be replaced. The, we had a grant the year prior, a earmark grant that Representative Dooley had worked on to buy the glass, to replace the glass in the skylights in the roof. But the project scope of the roof project covered the install of all that material. Insulated panels to to bring the school up to being more green and conserve energy. Then the the weatherproofing, the the fifty-year shingle, the, you know, all of the drainage work. So that's all in the the memo that I sent to you. So it was a broad project, came in, again, more than a quarter of a million under budget. And that includes all the unexpected construction costs. So I know when the select board and we voted on the set town meeting, you asked us to look for opportunities throughout the project to generate savings, and we did that really diligently. And as a result of that, we were able to absorb those unexpected costs, which were fairly significant for, again, the wood rot and the redesign without going over budget or even hitting project contingency because we made other decisions along the way to eliminate costs and streamline things.
Thank you. I just wanted to really highlight, as a comparative to the total project cost, how big of a portion that savings was. So thank you.
And and again, with fifty-three percent reimbursement from the town, you can cut the project, the total project cost in half as to what the town absorbed versus what was paid by MSBA.
Perfect.
Thomas and Midora, did you have anything you wanted to add? They were on the subcommittee overseeing the the construction, so I don't know if you have anything you wanted to add.
I do know.
Oh, I'm just going to say, while we're on this topic of the roof, harking back to the earlier portion of the meeting to pile on Matt, a little more praise. Ingrid is very kind in saying that we all collectively found, you know, two hundred and sixty-plus thousand dollars lying around that we could save on this project, but the lion's share of that effort was from Matt. So thank you very much, Matt. Was a, it was a very speedy compressed timeframe. And I think the last time we discussed coming under budget, this board and I had a conversation about it, and I said, well, we know we'll be at least twenty thousand dollars under budget. And turns out it was more than that. So that was exciting.
Thanks, Midora. Blaise, anything else to add to the presentation or the line of question?
This has been great to just bring these these items back around in front of everybody, remind everybody of how important they are. We really hope that the MSBA is chooses us because, you know, our debt structure is such that this will be, this and the fire station, we're both, you know, tough projects financially and being in that program will certainly make a big difference in that. So because both, you know, both are very much needed. So and I really liked learning more about all the the technology aspects that I didn't fully understand before. So thanks.
All right. Well, thank you once again, Ingrid, Trish, Midora, Thomas, Matt, for joining us and taking us through the presentation. We look forward to talking more about it when we hear something back from MSBA.
Thanks so much. Have a good evening, everybody.
So Matt is here in his own right to just run through the broader picture of facilities in town and upcoming things that we're going to be, need to focus on amongst our other buildings. So Matt, can you share your screen for that?
I believe Kevin, can you enable it for, so I can share a screen?
You, sir, are a co-host. Go right ahead.
How's that? Can you guys see that?
Sure can.
Okay. Quick overview of the department, what we do, what is shared between town schools, everybody is very well aware of. We take care of two hundred and ninety thousand square feet. Our primary service area includes custodial care, cleaning, building maintenance, repair, preventive maintenance, and utilities. We track and respond to environmental health, safety, and security issues. We ensure compliance, keep up with regulatory codes and regulations. And we work with various state agencies and researching for various grants and applying for various grants to benefit the town. We oversee a full range of contractors, especially in fire alarms, fire extinguisher, sprinkler systems, septic systems, heating controls, elevators, generators, and so on. We plan and implement capital improvements and manage various capital construction projects from design to completion. Some of our initiatives to continue to keep the buildings safe and efficient, to contain costs and get maximum value for the tax dollars. We've been working a lot lately with the Green Energy or the Energy Committee, and we've been doing some great improvements to the town, which I can share if you'd like. We've also been working on bringing not only the department in its entirety up to ocean deal of us compliance issues, but we're working with the town to tackle on some of the overall town issues as well and also school issues. And we try to make sure that the buildings are clean and excellent in shape and to make sure that the citizens are getting their great value from them and making sure it's comfortable and good for all the employees that are working them. And our biggest thing this year has been the response to COVID, they've combat COVID nineteen. My team has been incredible at protecting the town, in my opinion, and I'm very proud of that. Just a quick overview, there's me, there's Matt Malanrich, who is also on this call, who's the secret to my success. He really is the silent, amazing one in the department. I feel very proud of him, and I feel that he should be getting some of the accolades because he's truly behind a massive part of it. Right now, we have eight full-time school custodians. Typically, we have six. This year, we have two funded through the CARES Act to help with the schools. We have a full-time municipal custodian. We have a shared custodian and also a full-time tradesman who covers all our facilities and assists with pretty much anything we come across. So I'm just doing basically a two-year. We submitted a lot of capital improvement requests, but just to kind of keep what's relevant in the near future, let's go building by building, council on aging. One of the biggest things I've been pushing for is there's a commercial kitchen in there, which is not typically used, but there's talk of using it more often again. And it's the the cooking equipment in there needs to have some safety equipment put on it. It's it's dangerous how it is now. I'm fearful that bad things could happen because we don't have safeguards. It was grandfathered in when it was built. It's not up to today's code and it's just not safe. So that's one of important requests. The building over there, while the front looks good, if you keep going around the back, we actually have a decent amount of rotting wood on the exterior. So there's been multiple different opinions on what to do with that. I'm an advocate for insulating and vinyl siding it. While it doesn't look as nice, it's much longer term, it's much cheaper, and it'll last much longer. And also, we need to do some design for the parking lot over there. The building does not have enough parking to suit its needs. So instead of, my my thought process was that we have a design and have everything that we need to do incorporated before we go out. So have stormwater drainage, line striping, parking lot paving and signage, and kind of have an overall design for it, which we're estimating is up to thirty thousand dollars. That's an FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three. We're looking to insulate more. That building is not very well insulated. We've been tackling areas as we've had issue with spray foam insulation. It's it's cost-effective and it it helps out. So not only does it prevent damage from the cold weather, but it also helps keep the building cooler and use less fuel. One thing we also did, we like to upgrade the parking lot lighting. We we put in all LEDs in there, but it's not efficient how it's ran. And also, we'd like to add more to make it more comfortable and safe for the seniors. So there's a large cost, unfortunately, with in-ground lighting and also paving. So that's kind of with the new lighting and paving. So we're looking at basically upgrade the exterior, the parking lot to make it better. And so FY twenty-three is to not only do the paving, but do the lighting as well. Sorry. The library. So this year, with the Green Communities, we replaced, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but we replaced every exterior light fixture on the building, including the bollards in front of the building. And we've, the current site lights that are the parking lot lights, we'll call them, those have been redone with LED fixtures and got rid of high, very inefficient metal halide lamps. We also were awarded from town meeting, we have a ninety thousand dollar budget to do building exterior maintenance. Blaise alluded to earlier that I, it's not, you can't just go out to bid and say, paint the building. There's massive amounts of work and scope to put it out there so we can properly vet it so it comes in on a budget with no unknowns. So that's already happened this year. FY twenty-two, we're looking to replace some of the BMS, which is Building Management Systems. Everything's computerized over there for the HVAC system, including the lights. But what we want to do right now is the, we're losing, everything is original. And like Trish was saying, with technology, we're not able to upgrade a lot of the controls over there because they're, they're not, they're beyond their life expectancy. And they, I don't know how it all works with the technology, but they won't, we can't fix them at this point. So we're having areas in the building that, because the control's not working properly, they're either using too much energy. So we're having areas in the building that because the control is not working properly, they're either using too much energy or they're not or too much fuel or not enough fuel because they're not able to control them properly. And then replace carpeting. The the room that gets used, one of the busiest rooms in town, except for this year, is the um community room at the library and the rug is very worn out. We clean it twice a year. Uh, it's kind of horrible looking, so we'd like to replace the rug in there and outside the bathrooms as you walk into the library and that's estimated at thirty thousand dollars. And then FY twenty-three, uh, you can ask any firefighter in town. Um, the fire line control panel, the um is beyond um the end of its life. It was a proprietary system. It's miserable. It goes off all the time. It creates lots of false alarms. We spend a lot of money uh keeping it going. Uh, it's just miserable, so it'd be the cost effective to replace it with a newer non-proprietory system, so we don't have to have specialists come in at double the rate of everybody else. Uh, so that's asking fifty on that and then uh, something that you'll see, I'm sure, from Libby as well, um, video surveillance system uh at the library. They want one that does the in- interior. I want one that does not on the interior, but the exterior as well, just so for monitoring parking lot issues. Put some cameras around town hill so we can monitor anything, so make it safer and have records of anything that goes wrong. So on to town hall. Town hall is, it's I've mentioned this before to you guys, it's uh was built in ninety-eight, it has one boiler, the original boiler. It's always a concern. Most commercial buildings have two boilers for redundancy. We have one. We've got more than our life expectancy that we should have out of it and we're still running it. I want to make it more efficient by going to gas, um, so there is no gas. So we have to have gas service installed. Uh, FY twenty-two, uh, we're anticipating hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar ask and basically that's to run the gas from the library up um independence into the property. And then FY twenty-three to replace the boilers, the pumps. Replace boiler, pump uh and chillers. I don't think the chiller, I'm sorry, that was a mistake. It's just replace the boiler and the pumps and electrical upgrades because the second part of it is we also have no emergency generator. So when we lose power at town hall, it takes down other buildings as well because a lot of the servers are based out of town hall. And we have our own private fiber, but when we lose power, systems go down across the town. DPW, they are also in need of a video surveillance system. And this would be a much less complex one than at the library because it's a smaller area or you can bigger area, so you don't need as many cameras. We're asking twenty thousand dollars for that system. We're also asking fifty thousand dollars for uh a safety issue, basically, is in the middle of the where the vehicles park. The vehicle storage garage, they um, there is a low-rated structure that all the water goes into and the structure is failing, so it, we could have trucks falling, getting stuck and causing damage because the condition of the drain. One thing uh I'm trying to hopefully take off of FY twenty-three, which I've been working with the Green Energy Committee is for our next round of grants is to replace uh a furnace in the in the storage area, which is from nineteen seventy-seven and it it doesn't do a very good job and it's not efficient at all. And we're actually meeting tomorrow with a engineer from New Hampshire who's coming down to replace to give us ideas of what it would cost to replace the furnace with infrared heaters, much like we put in at the police station, which are very efficient and they work a million times better and so hopefully that'll be uh coming off my request. Olive Day School was built ninety-three and ninety-nine, so this year we have got approval for replacement of circu- circulator pumps. And we also have money to rebuild the sewer ejector pumps. Both are critical sewer ejector pumps. I don't have a history on them. Uh, basically, we're gonna remove them and have them shipped out and completely rebuilt and put back in service and also the controls, um, because if those fail, we're in huge trouble. FY twenty-two, uh, the building is pneumatics, uh, which show all the classrooms and thermostats, everything in the building runs off of air. That was old technology when the school was built. I don't know why they went that way, but they did. So we want to upgrade a lot of our system to make it like pretty much any building built after nineteen ninety, which is uh DDC, Direct Digital uh BMS system, so you can control, you can see, you can modulate and you can get efficiency. Right now with the air, there's not much we can do. Um, so that would be a large project. Um, also, the year after is we have uh air handlers, there's seven air, seven air handlers at the Olive Day. They're all original. They run year-round. They're all kind of worn out, so we're looking to have a company come in and change all the bearings, clean everything up, rebalance and um continue uh make it so they have a longer service service life and um if we had to replace, it's huge money, so we want to take a um the stance of trying to um maintain. And then the parking lot light replacement, we're hoping, like Ingrid said, to replace the uh parking lot in its entirety at the Olive Day School. I'm sure you guys have all been there. It's in rough shape. We also, unlike the other buildings in town, the light baller, the parking lot light fixtures, the tall ones that they're in poor shape. Over the years, they've had snow and people touch hitting them and they're all very crooked, so it's uh just replace the bulbs in this one. It's replace the fixtures and the poles and everything. Uh, that Freeman Kennedy School. This year we wanted uh twenty-two, we're looking to have a company come in and recommission the HVAC system, which basically we want them to balance the system out better because over time uh things loosen up and the tolerances aren't the same and you have new leakage and you have rooms being modified, so we want to have the entire uh HVAC system recommissioned and balanced. It should uh, it'll make the building more comfortable and it should decrease costs of running if it's balanced properly. We're not trying to use more energy because we don't have enough airflow going somewhere to overcome. And then Ingrid talked about the expansion design and I just very little on that, it's just I put in there a two million dollar line for FY twenty-two and then FY twenty-four, eighteen million, but um eighteen million, we had to fully fund, but then we'd get the money back, half of the money back, hopefully, if we work with the MSBA. So we'd have to appropriate the money, but theoretically it would be nine million. One thing I'd really like to do for the department is um, I know it's a touchy subject, uh, our vehicles. We have an old dump truck that we inherited from the DPW, which we love and we use. Um, right now it has a uh sticker on it from two thousand eighteen. It's not gonna pass, but we don't have an option. Uh, so we still run it. We was out there running today, cleaning up the school, plowing. Uh, we like to get a newer truck. One thing that facilities does is we move a lot of stuff all the time, supplies from school to school to town. We're constantly running around with supplies, so we, right now, we we use the old dump truck or an older, an old uh retired uh van from the school department when they used to do busing. We're asking for a one-ton uh pickup truck with a lift gate uh so we can uh safely and reliably continue to move our equipment around and it would make a big difference in our department's uh operations. And that is it for my two-year. If we would go to the five-year, we could be here all night. Um, so you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, Matt, and thank you for uh taking into consideration uh the length of the presentations this evening. We appreciate that. Uh, I think as it pertains to my questions, uh, first and foremost, I'd like to happily note that you are the first person to come to a capital item proposal and take things off of the capital list, so we appreciate that. Thank you very much. As it pertains to running gas up to town hill, you know, as part of the B-one, we've been talking a lot about the value of the commercial property that's up there towards the other side of Liberty Lane. And uh, you know, a lot of things we heard from the community is the potential for restaurants to be put into one of those areas. And obviously, in order to execute a restaurant well, you would want to have gas run up there. Is there the potential to partner with that type of project or initiative to be able to have that work into so we could kill two proverbial birds, one stone? Or is this have to stay separate in uh some other capacity?
A great question. When, so I've been pushing for this for years because oil is, it's great, but it's dirty and it's gas is wonderful. You get so much of better efficiency. The equipment generally lasts longer because it's just a better fuel. So the nice, beautiful building next door to town hall, Tom DiPlazito, uh, when he was building that, we had proposed uh adding his his consumption onto it because basically uh the corner, if you, if you're on Main Street where the juvenile room is, or I get, don't know if you guys are familiar, but there's a stairwell going down. That's where the gas basically stops. So the more people that would can be consumers, the cheaper the price is because they fact, the gas company factors that all in. So I'm basically going at it alone because DiPlazito's uh building wa- wa- wasn't worth uh it to them to do it and we also spoke, um, reached out to the owner of the Rite Aid complex to see if they want to switch because they have, they have propane over there. And it was a cost that I guess there, I don't remember the exact details, their tenants pay the fuel, so it's not really something that it really would benefit that uh group. I would absolutely love if we had some sort of plan that we could go to the gas company and say, hey, listen, we're gonna have this many more BTU that it on, what can you do for us? Um, I just know that they're gonna want some sort of guarantee, but it would definitely decrease the price. But I I really, I'm very truly, I, you know, Blithe and I have had several discussions about this because the boiler is a something that keeps me up at night because it it runs, uh, it costs a lot to maintain it, but it's, again, it's old and boilers. You can ask Mr. Cronin or anybody in town that services them, if you have an oil-fired burner boiler, you're lucky to have twenty thousand or twenty thousand, twenty years out of it. Um, if it's oil, um, we're over that. So and that, in, we don't have physical space to put in two boilers in town, in the mechanical space in town hall. But if we want the gas, it would, we could put uh redundancy, the gas boilers are fractional size and high efficiency, so it would give us a better, more flexibility, it would give us redundancy. We'd save on the fuel, but obviously there's a large cost to get it there, but it also would give us a um a path forward to put a emergency generator there too, because by using the the consumption of the generator that helps offset the gas costs and then we wouldn't have to worry about um dealing with any fuel oils. Uh, so the machine would be, the generator would be more reliable. So, but I, if we had somebody that had definitive plans, we would definitely share the cost.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, that went along.
I'll uh open it up to the rest of the board for any questions or comments from Matt, starting with Cece.
No, no questions, no comments.
Over to Anita.
No, thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
One point, Kevin.
All right, Headlight.
So all all these numbers, you know, add up to big numbers and that's not lost on us. I would point out that um the Green Community Program um offers, once you've complete your first year projects, you can get on the cycle to apply for the competitive grants and that's what Matt's been working really hard on, is to wrap those up and get them done so that we can get into those programs and potentially with some of these projects, I can't identify exactly which ones tonight. Apply to that funding source to pay for some of these, so take it off the tax, you know, immediately off the taxpayer's dime and shift it to, you know, a grant that would cover is instead, so just wanted you all to know that we're we're gonna actively work on that and go after those, you know, very hard.
That is, um, I forgot to mention that as well, yes. So the boiler and the gas would definitely be priority number one with the green community, which would help absorb all the cost. Um, and we're also they're trying to get away from lighting upgrades and changing to more HVAC upgrades, so we have plenty of them that should help offset some of these upcoming costs. Larry Sullivan has been an amazing partner for the town. We're very fortunate to have him. He's very thorough. He's constantly working on this. I spend many conversations a week with Larry and uh I I feel good that he will do such a thorough job with the application that we will get some of these grants as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much again, Matt. Really appreciate the thorough presentation, the detail and the time.
Thank you.
All right, let me see if I can get back to our agenda.
Let me stop sharing.
Thank you, sir. Our next item this evening is to please discuss a presentation regarding the use of rotaries in Norfolk. Uh, so I'll I'll jump out in front of this one, Blithe, because I'm the one that asked for this. Um. We appreciate Chief Stone jumping on and sitting through the last two hours of this meeting to be able to give this to us. I had been approached by a number of residents over the course of the last three years with their frustrations about how certain people navigate uh the rotaries that we have in town, whether it be the incessant incessant sitting on a horn, whether it be the just blazing through it, whether it be the speeds, uh, whatever it is, it just seems that there's a a growing discomfort in town about the way that some folks navigate these things. And while I understand that not all of them are probably watching this meeting, uh, the hope is that we'd be able to outline this in a comprehensive and engaging fashion, as Chief Stone is absolutely known for. And to be able to have this to share in the future, in case we wanted anybody to get a refresher course on the best way to do this in a safe manner, so. Blithe, does anything else you'd like to add?
Um, yes, I was, um, we had anticipated that this would be a um, a joint effort tonight between Chief Stone and 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 uh the DP director, DPW Director Blair Crane, but um, as you can appreciate, he was out for um and ridiculous amount of hours plowing, so he's not here tonight. Um, his office took the lead on the presentation. And um, and Chief very much involved is, I know, do a great job delivering it, so um, I'd say take it away. Do you, are you gonna share this on your screen or?
I am. I just opened it and it broke everything. Give me one second. Chief Stone, would you like to give us a bit of an intro?
Well, yeah, I'm doing this for Blair and Barry. They did a great job putting this together and I just contributed a couple of facts for them and and it did, the presentation has come out the way it did, so you'll see it in a second as uh Kevin shows it. You know, I go back in town quite a bit for, in years, so uh, you know, I remember the different renditions of what was actually in the center from two-stop sign intersection to a four-stop sign to the roundabout, and they all came about for a reason. We were having just a lot of accidents back in the, when I first got my license, it was, you know, it was a two-stop uh intersection. There was, one was on Rockwood Road, the other was on the other side on Union Street. They were having some really tough accidents, what we call T-bone, so it was just a perpendicular type uh side uh blowway accident where there was a lot of damage in there, a lot of people got hurt. So uh, you know, in the early eighties, uh, they decided at about the same time the country crossing was being built to make it into a four-to, four uh stop sign intersection. But in order to do that, they had to lower the town hill or the Main Street Hill, because they never would have been able to stop at the stop sign because Main Street back in the day was a a straight through, you didn't have to stop. So and then it became a four-way stop, so most of the people on the screen tonight probably don't even remember that, that uh it was a four, four-stop intersection, but there was still a lot of accidents here, probably thirty-five to forty a year, uh, and they were pretty, pretty good ones, you know. You know, people would come into the intersection at uh twenty-five miles an hour, thirty miles an hour going down, you know, either way and slow down and and as we all know, and people have, you know, forget that there's a stop sign there, they're new to the area and that's what most of those accidents were about. So we had discussions, long discussions uh back then in the two thousand floors and I was chief back then, so uh going back to the end of ninety-three, so at that point, uh, we we discussed having a roundabout. Well, roundabouts are similar to a rotary, like Foxborough Center has a rotary and, but it's, a rotary is a two-lane circular intersection, but a roundabout's a one lane. Uh, so you, you know, that it's designed to promote slower consistent vehicle speeds entering, circulating and exiting the intersection. And the roundabouts are, they they promote a continuous flow of traffic. So one of the things you may not have seen before was that traffic on Union Street, Rockwood Road and Main Street would back up in all four directions. Rockwood Road and Main Street would back up in all four directions for ridiculous length of time. It would go down to St. Jude's. It would go back to the H L Day School. And the other directions would be way around the corner, almost to Stony Brook sometimes. Um, over the tracks down to Boardman Street. Uh, so. We were trying to come up with an idea that would get the traffic uh in through the intersection at the peak commuter hours that you've all experienced. And keep the traffic moving. Well, the roundabouts work. Because in the very first year that we had them in, after they're constructed, I think it was two thousand four and five. Uh, they, they work. They, they, the accidents were reduced. Uh, we had zero for several years in a row, zero accidents in the roundabouts. Oh, yeah, and Kevin, you mentioned it. There's a occasional fist wave. Sometimes only single fingers show up. Sometimes the whole fish shows up. There's uh windows roll down and people yell and all that, all that happens and. You know, it's, and I liken that to the people just plain don't understand how to enter the intersection. And I can tell you in two thousand four, five and six, we actually got together and made a handout. Uh, that we could, that we distributed through the mail and everybody in town got one. So, you know, the, the residents knew how to empty the intersection, but I suffice to say that the people who don't live here don't know how to use it. So. I know that from time to time you will see cruisers parked in various locations around the center, most often right in front of the. Cutout and the, the Federated Church. And that's when we have our opportunity to do some, I want to call it, education. Uh, about how to get through the intersection. Uh, what speeds to travel. How, how, we, we try very hard to educate on how to stay between the lines going around the circle. As opposed to going lower the bricks. Uh, and we know that they like to do that, so. Traffic's not required to stop. They're, they're supposed to yield. So when we get to an intersection, what we're supposed to do. At, at that, at the two roundabouts, what we're supposed to do is look, make sure there's nobody in, in the uh. In the crosswalk, as pedestrians, as we all know from driver education, have the right of way. You know, so we, we make sure that we get through there, that nobody's, nobody's in the crosswalk or about to alight into the crosswalk. And keep going. And so then when we enter the intersection, we're looking for an opening. Well, as we all know, during the peak commuter hours, sometimes that opening is far and few between. But the person who's in the intersection in the circle. Has the right of way and then everybody else is supposed to find, find a gap that they can squeeze a car into. And most often. You know, we, we see it all the time in, in our business, but most often everybody is gracious enough to let you in. There's a lot of, you know, the, the hands go in the, up in the air, but it's actually, yeah, go ahead. You're, you go next and. Uh, I go through there, you know, half a dozen times a day and it's not that difficult, but. So this, this whole project came about. Um, it's part of the tips project, so. Uh, we got, we got quite a bit, bit of money, you know, it's on this, on the slide. Uh, that shows that we got over two million dollars for that. So. The, there were a lot of things that were put into play when we made the, the intersection in the, in the center, uh, all changes there. So we looked, looked out at a lot, a lot of the intersections and the, the final two that we, we centered on was the Union Street one. Right down by Union and North. And then the other one was right in the center. But we looked at doing roundabouts in several locations, Boardman and Main, Boardman and Rockwood. Uh, up at the Independence in Maine. So there were a lot of them that were looked at. But they would, they, we didn't go forward with them because it probably wasn't enough space or perhaps it wasn't enough money at the time. So. What you found here, that what we did was the roundabouts got done. All new drainage was put in. We have the, they buried the under, the overhead wires in town center, which it really looks good as a result. We did go forward with that decorative street lighting. There was the new sidewalks, the new, new curbing handicap ramps. Uh, we didn't have before, crosswalks in a bunch of different locations. All designed to make it safety, uh, more safe. Uh, at what you might remember is that that stone wall on Union Street. Actually moved back into the town hill quite a bit. And uh, a lot of, a lot of nice landscaping was done and some other work. Now, all of that was done to avoid putting in a full way red light type stops, stop intersection. Uh, you know, the red, yellow, green intersection. You would have had to have, in order to do it for the tips, you would have had to have a left turn, a straight forward and a right turn. Well, I, I always made the joke is if, if they had moved the, the wall into the town hill further. That the right turn lane would have been in the back pew of the Federated Church. So as opposed to doing all of that, they come up with a roundabout idea because it didn't require as much space. Now, roundabout is smaller. It doesn't use as much space as a rotary. But I can tell you from just my experience on the job, it does work, so.
Thank you, Chief. That, that was fantastic. I mean, the outline that you went through that highlighted, you know, why we went this route and the best way to be able to navigate it. I mean, exactly what we were looking to get out of this. And, you know. Blair did a great job of putting together this presentation that, you know, highlighted as you had said what roundabouts are, what their intent is. Uh, kind of the evolution of Norfolk Center. It's crazy to think that Norfolk Center looked like that just back in two thousand one, which doesn't seem like it's that long ago. And then he kind of went through the design specifications and the considerations that you had talked about. Uh, he talked about the accident data that we've seen in the area. Uh, was there anything we wanted to add to this slide?
Well, this slide here just tells, talks about how many accidents we've had in the center. Also, but it's just as a. To something to compare against, you have the one A and one uh fifteen signal. Uh, which is the, the only red light in our town uh with traffic light. Uh, this has been thirteen accidents over the three years. So. You know, they, they're not the end all be all, just because you have a traffic light. Not everybody always behaves at those either. So. Um, you know, people don't see it. They don't know what they're supposed to do. They miss the light. Uh, they think they can get through it. Uh, accidents do happen. We, we call them crashes. Now, we don't call them accidents.
Well, I know that, you know, the good people that live here in Norfolk uh probably got it during the first pass where you outlined the best way to be able to do this. But for those in the back and for those in our neighboring communities, which we'll try to get these out to as well. Would you mind just taking us through the bullets here of the best way to navigate?
So, you know, the whole idea is you, you drive up to the intersection. I think the speed limit is roughly twenty-five miles an hour leading up to it. But going through the intersection, the speed should be a little at fifteen or under. And when you approach the intersection, yes, you gotta wait uh sometimes uh to get to work your way into the intersection, but. Fifteen miles an hour is the, is the idea. And if you look on the pavement. Going around and through the circle on the paved section, there are, there's a yellow line surrounding the, the center circle. You're not supposed to cross that. That was designed so that if a very long trailer truck could not make it through. Uh, easily, they would, they would, maybe the rear end of the trailer would actually go over that. But you are supposed to slow down to fifteen miles an hour and go through. And at that speed, uh, that way, the, the, if there was ever an accident, it's at a glancing blow at an angle. And there's been a few of those over the years. Most of the accidents, I'll tell you, were people who hit the splitter. And we all know where the splitter is at the beginning of that intersection. Uh, that, that sort of turns you to the right a little bit. Uh, those people, we had several of those accidents. They were drunk drivers. We had two or three that went right over the middle circle. Uh, with right through the flower beds, uh, same thing. So. Uh, it hasn't been because people were trying to get through there at fifty miles an hour. That's, that's impossible. It's uh, you know, you might get twenty to twenty-five going around that circle, but no, the, the, the speed. When we have put our radar gun out, it just, it's not that, not that fast.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Chief. And I see here that Blair included a link for a short YouTube video for those who are more visual learners among us. Uh, we won't play that right now, but uh for those that are interested, we have that linked here so that you could go and see that once you're reviewing this video.
So Kevin, when we were looking for those, that video, he found that one. It was only a couple of minutes, so it would, it was appropriate for how much time you might want to spend. But I also looked at maybe ten other ones and they're from all around the country. And they tell you how to navigate the uh roundabout and they're very good and they're very helpful. So. There's other ones that once you click onto that one, it'll line you up with maybe a half a dozen more that you might want to look at, so.
Fantastic. And like I said, I know that the good residents of Norfolk have probably got it down by this point, but as we share this with our friends in our neighboring communities, perhaps we can link those videos, including the full series of videos that go with it. Uh, to help them really bridge that understanding gap. Well, Chief, I, I really can't express how much I appreciate you taking the time and hanging with us for the last two and a half hours to help the community out by presenting this. Uh, I know Blair wasn't here. He's probably getting a well deserved nap, but we appreciate his efforts to put together the presentation and the visuals as well. And uh, thank you so much for helping to keep us safe.
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Blythe, was there anything that you wanted to add before we move on? Uh, rest of the board, any questions or comments you might have on the navigation of rotaries? Hard pass? Very nice. Our next item this evening is to please discuss a citizen of the year award. Blythe, we'll keep your break going for background. Um, I was the one that requested to put this on the agenda this evening. Uh, very quickly, over the course of the last three years, uh, we've had a lot of citizen engagement as it pertains to a varying number of efforts and projects here in town. Uh, we have mechanisms in place right now where we recognize uh some volunteers in town who have given their time to the boards and committees in town. Uh, but as we go through these individual efforts in which, you know, the public contributes their time. I, I don't think we really have a way to recognize those kinds of contributions within our community. And so as such, I thought it might be a good idea to discuss the implementation of a citizen of the year award. You know, the way that I envisioned this was anybody who's not affiliated to a specific board or committee or acts outside of the direct role that they're serving in. Uh, within the community to help, you know. Bring Norfolk forward, to reinforce some of the contribute, some of the relationships here in town, whether it be small business, whether it be recreation, whatever it may be. I wanted a way for us to be able to recognize those individuals who contribute their time outside of a board and committee here in town. Um, I, I thought that I could think of at least a dozen names off the top of my head of folks who have given their time to, you know, B one development items or to. Uh, the projects over at Southwood or Lawrence Street. And all of them have done it in a way that's been engaging and collaborative. Uh, with the boards and committees in town, which is something that I think we want to really reinforce. So as we continue to talk about these initiatives that we have in place to enhance citizen engagement. I thought it'd be a great idea to implement something to recognize those kinds of contributions throughout the community. Um, I'm eager to hear any thoughts or perspectives from the rest of the board or Blythe. Uh, so at this time, without going into too much more detail, I'll open it up for those comments, starting with Anita.
Um. I guess recognizing people is always nice. Um, I know they do something. Doesn't the Community League recognize some people as well? So I would want to make sure that we checked with the Community League and didn't feel like they, that they thought we were stepping on their toes. Right? If it's just something completely separate, I don't have any objection to that. I think it's nice. When people do something to have some recognition, I just wouldn't want to outstep something that's already there. That's part of the town um routines.
Nope, that's a great point. They absolutely do have a similar recognition path that I completely did not think about when putting this through. However, I do think that there would be some value in separating some of the initiatives, but would obviously want to coordinate that with them. Great point. Cece?
Um, again, as sort of as Anita said, and it's tough to say that giving um credit where credit is due for people's volunteer efforts. I'm assuming you're talking about volunteers and not people who are paid by the town, um, which would be a different. Situation. Um, it's always nice to do. I think my only concerns would be as Anita said, that there's already this um. With the Community League and while I understand the Community League is not town governance. They are an organization that does a great amount for the town and this being part of sort of their platform, I'd hate to. Rob them of any thunder and I'm also mindful that in the tranche of no good deed goes unpunished. There is a lot of politics inherent in selecting. Who the citizen um would be and it would certainly be easy enough, I think, in the early years, but. Um, just, I, I'd, I'd be interested, once you've sort of separated it out from the Community League, the um process by which the. Person or persons are selected for consideration, et cetera. Um, that type of thing. I would just be more curious about that part process once um. Once you sort of get farther along with it, but those are my concerns. Like, and I even see those within other organizations in terms of. You start out with the best of intentions. You see folks who've really done a lot in terms of volunteer work. Or whatever. Um, and then when it comes time to sort of make the awards. Trouble ensues. So my mistrust of humans, I guess, or human nature.
Do you mean we couldn't just put that on Blythe to pick the person and then have Blythe deal with all the feedback from that?
That is, I completely support that. I think that is an excellent idea. I change. I, I completely change my concern. I am now.
Although I, I understand what you're saying and it, it does make sense. And, you know, I think primarily if we do have overlap with something that's already in place. Then, you know, maybe there's some opportunity to better, you know, partner on that or better to promote that in some way, shape or form. Um, but I, I did think it was important and it, Cece, one of the things I wanted to clarify was. There already is a mechanism in place to recognize those who have served in an official capacity as a volunteer here in town. Uh, this would be something for those who aren't working under the guise of one of those boards or committees. Which does also yield a concern of redundancy. I understand that as well, but. I, I think that it's a great point to highlight the need to coordinate and not overlap too much with what's already in place. So uh, I'll be happy to reach out to NCL to try to work that out a little bit more. And if there is an opportunity. Uh, we can bring it up at a future meeting. So thank you for the thoughts and input. Blythe, anything you want to throw in there, other than you don't want to, want to pick somebody?
Um, just that I, I found from other communities, it's, it's sometimes a nice touch to use uh the annual town meeting. Have an article on the warrant to recognize said citizen. So it's a typical community gathering. Some communities, um, you know. Call the citizen a year or use an old fashioned, um, no longer relevant, but quaint. Uh, title for the job like, you know, measure of wooden bark to. See signify what they give, you know, the award that they've won and it's for a particular, you know, set of circumstances or, you know, qualities that someone brings. And um, give them a little plaque and maybe some flowers and make it, you know, just kind of a celebration. So that's just, just a thought.
That's a great idea. Thank you. Uh, normally I would ask if anybody in attendance has any comment or question. Oh, do we do a few people in here? So I'll open it up. If anybody has a comment or question on the current agenda item, please use the raise hand function at this time.
Kevin, could you stop presenting?
I wanted to get Blair as much screen time as possible with his graphics. Thanks, Anita.
They were nice graphics.
Uh, so I am seeing, oh, I am seeing a raised hand. Donna, go right ahead. Donna, I think you're still on mute. If you could go unmuted.
Better?
Much better. Go right ahead.
Um, for those that go into town hall outside of room one twenty-four, there's a. There's one wall that has a plaque of all the select board members and another wall that has other citizens. Is that the current method of recognizing citizens?
So we have the select board wall to the left when you go into the back door, one twenty-four. On the exact opposite wall by the other door, we have the board and committee members, the volunteers who will be recognized. Um, I don't know if there is a citizen plaque or recognition wall of any kind.
Okay, I had never heard how anyone gets up on that. Second wall. So that explains that it's within, and things have been done. At town meeting like that, you know, someone stepping off the board. You've been on it for years and they give you a thank you at town. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. All right, I'm not seeing any hands at this time, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is to please discuss the website posting of board correspondence. I do not believe that we've received anything new unless I'm mistaken. Um, Anita, Cece, anything that you've seen come across that warrants posting? Um, Anita, Cece, anything that you've seen come across that warrants posting?
I just got a bunch more emails about the signs. Which I didn't forward to Blithe, but I think they were mostly sent to all of us.
Yes, I do believe that we received any correspondence, uh, we all receive any correspondence related to the signs. Um, Blithe, I'm sorry, I haven't checked back in with Ton, are we in a good position now in terms of getting at least the structure built out for these emails on the website?
I think he's just waiting to hear from you that you liked the structure, you didn't like the structure. He sent, he sent a, a draft of the page. To uh ask you to green light it or not.
Very good, I will reply back and green light it.
Rather interestingly, I'm not getting any of the, I got one email about signs in the last couple of weeks, I have, I, I seem to be uh. Uh, somehow not on the chain of those these days, so.
I know, I'll forward mine.
There is the jinx of all jinxes right there, Blithe.
Yes, I know.
And I am, I wouldn't mind actually uh maybe going through, like, I don't think that we need all of the, the latest. Batch, but I can think of one or two that I wouldn't mind having people sort of read. Of the latest batch, but I mean, I don't really care, but I can, I mean, I'll forward it to you to see if it's the same one that you guys have gotten. Or they are the same ones that you've gotten.
Yeah, did they have a lot of capital letters?
Probably, um, also a lot of snarky rhetorical questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, for the sake of completeness then, why, why would we just make one street sign category and throw all the correspondence we have?
Put them all in there, I think so, let's put them all in.
Yep.
Okay. Understood, I will start compiling those, Blithe, and get them over in PDF form to Ton.
Great.
Uh, our next item this evening are, are town administrator updates, Blithe, please take it away.
A couple, very short, um, so I had hoped that we'd be in person tonight and I have the budget books to be able to hand to you. Um, but a couple of things got in the way and we'll be wrapping those up this week. My goal is to have them done Thursday and we'll, we can figure out whether we drop them off to you, leave them in the mailroom, something like that. The first overview, the, the book you got last year updated for this year, so that's coming. Um, and we will be, what we're looking for is some, some feedback from you about how you'd like to go through the review process. Um, advisory is not going to get going on this until March. Um, so what, what, how would like the board like to go through it and what level of detailed review are you looking for? That feedback would be great. Um, on the budget theme, uh, just a reminder, KP's having their annual budget hearing next Monday night, the eighth. Um, they are doing it in person, I guess they decided that a, a budget hearing and feedback is, for them, is not easily done remotely. So that is a uh show up and be in the seat situation, uh, which actually feels a little weird these days, but um, good for them. Just wanted to remind her about that. Um, at the last advisory committee meeting, Kevin and I attended, there was some uh discussion about town meeting. And uh, when it was and where to have it. Um, moderator joined in for that and um. That group just thought very, it was important that we uh consider an outdoor town meeting again this year. I'm not sure where everyone's going to be at with vaccines and so, and the pandemic overall. Um, so we did reach out to KP, they can offer the um football field again on May fifteenth. And Saturday afternoon when we would normally meet, we're searching for a rain date for just in case. Um, not canceling the indoor date and the regular time, but just keeping our options open, so wanted to know about that. And then lastly, um, the fire station building committee uh advert went up on the website last week. We have gotten one application so far, certainly looking for more, so. Um, share it or to all your friends, neighbors, you know. Folks that you hang out with and, well, when you used to hang out with them, those, those people too, anybody who um might um be interested in serving. And, and has some of the background that we're looking for, that would be great. And those are my updates.
Thank you, Blithe, uh, very quickly while we talk about advisory, I did just want to note quickly that uh in the last month, Arthur Franzak did submit his resignation. From the advisory committee to spend some more time with his family. Uh, he was on the advisory committee for quite a while and a great chair over the course of the last couple of years. Uh, so we did want to say thank you to him for his service and everything he did to contribute to the town on the advisory board. I also want to congratulate the new chair of the advisory board, Susan Klein, we look forward to working with her as we get ready for spring town meeting. Um, and I think that's everything I had up to that end. Uh, Blithe, I'm sorry, Cece or Anita, any questions or comments on Blithe's town administrator updates? Seeing none, seeing none, anybody in attendance have any questions related to Blithe's town administrator updates? Seeing none, we'll be moving on to our next agenda item, which is some warrants to be signed. Uh, I would move that the board approve for warrants for the period of January fifteenth to the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. As printed on the agenda for this meeting, go here a second.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Van Tine, aye.
Your vote was muted, Anita?
And my light is falling, Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is finally unanimous, thank you.
I'm in the dark.
Oh, it was a poor timing because you're up next to uh motion to approve some minutes.
Okay, I move that the board vote to approve the minutes of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting.
Second.
Hearing a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, do one more roll call vote, Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
And that is unanimous as well. Well, that brings us to the end of our agenda this evening, Blithe, is there anything else you'd like to share?
Uh, next meeting is February sixteenth, um, we will have a public hearing for that, we will be discussing. Um. For the board rates, recommendations uh to support next year's water enterprise fund budget. Um, so just point out, not a big deal, pretty, pretty typical this time of year, but want to make people aware of it.
And I will be unable to be there because of the, I am having my knees replaced, so um.
Well, I'm not sure which is worse, a knee replacement or a water rate hearing, but I'm sure we'll be able to figure it out. But nevertheless, we wish you a speedy recovery, Anita.
I'll, I'll listen in if I'm up to it. Then I can have a double whammy.
Uh, Cece, was there anything else you wanted to leave us with this evening?
Note.
Noted.
I have no, I have run out of words.
Well, with that, uh, we do appreciate everybody joining us tonight, thank you so much, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second in motion, further discussion, roll call vote, Kevin Calcutta, aye?
Cece Van Tine, aye.
Anita Mecklenburg, aye.
That is unanimous, thank you very much, have a great evening.
Thank you, good night.